So I am going to kick this off tonight. Medfield Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, January 7th. A few minutes late, it's about, we won't go by that clock because I don't know if it's right anymore. But roughly about 6:08. This meeting will be held in hybrid format. Select Board is here in person, members of the public may attend in person and we've got a good showing out here tonight. Addition, addition to that, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom can do so. Go to the home, go to the Medfield webpage, go to the Select Board Meeting or even the calendar that shows what's happening today. And you can click on the Zoom link and join us that way if you don't have access to a computer. You can certainly dial in. And then what I think is important, and I say it every week, is the info packet is there. So everything we're going to do tonight, you can follow us along. And I'm going to make a quick note that we are not going to have the Rose Bay discussion this evening. The Medfield Housing Authority is not going to be able to make it to the meeting. So I know there's some people that were going to attend for that, so I just want to give you a quick heads up on that right now. And by all means, I certainly want to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country.
Madam Chair, you also actually have to make that formal disclosure of video recording.
Oh, yes. And this meeting is being recorded, so if you want to watch it at a later date on Medfield TV or you can just do a Google search via YouTube. All right. With that, we'll kick things off. Our first appointment tonight is Medfield School Building Committee update. And we will also talk about the MSBA. All right, tag team here. All right, Happy New Year, everybody.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carolyn Casey, member of the School Building Committee.
Me, same thing.
So thank you for having us tonight and giving us a chance to sort of update you. For those who haven't heard, we have some fantastic news for the town of Medfield. And that is in December, the MSBA has asked Medfield invited us into their reimbursement program. So what that means is as we proceed ahead with deciding what to do with the Dale Street School, we will be doing it hand in hand with the MSBA. They have quite a thorough process worked out, very structured, lots of things that you follow along as they help you get to the end result. And the good part is that we will be entitled to a reimbursement at the end of the project. It's not for the full amount. Every town has a certain percentage that they get. And we figure at this time, we don't even know what our new school will cost, but probably in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 million would be the reimbursement towards 80 or 90 million dollar school. So that is like the best news and we're very excited about that. If you don't know what the MSBA is, you can Google that. And they have lots of information on their website and they tell you about the process. The first step is called the eligibility period. Some towns who got accepted into the program, they're actually starting that right now. But they couldn't fit every town in to start now, so we're starting in April. So, yeah, so Modular One, it has a lot of forms in it. It talks about, you know, you, you agree as a town, you know, to go through the whole process the way you want and fill out the forms and that kind of thing. And when that is done, you have 270 days you can take to do that Modular One or you could do it faster. We're kind of hoping to do it faster because we've just been through this process a few years ago. So we're hoping that we can go a little faster with it. And then step two is what they call a feasibility study. And that's when you hire an architect who then looks at the Dale Street property and gives us options about what to do there, whether we want to build brand new or we want to do an addition renovation. If you didn't know, the School Building Committee voted in the fall to use the Dale Street property as the site selection for the upcoming building project. We did that with a lot of information from the community, two surveys, four forums, and many meetings over the last two years to reach that. We meet the first Wednesday of the month. Since last Wednesday was a holiday, if you're interested in our meetings, it's tomorrow night, 7 o'clock at the Public Safety Building. You can watch it on Zoom or watch it later if you just, you know, it's recorded. We'd love to have people come, there's always a public participation part to it. And we also want to encourage people, in order to help the community stay up to date, we are doing something called Constant Contact, which means that we write email newsletters to update you. If you go on the town website and you go to School Building Committee, you will see on the menu on the left, there's a link, you have to put in your email, name and email. Is that right, Christine? Just those two things?
Just those two things.
And then you will get our updates. And, and it just really helps because you'll know exactly what's happening and you won't have to worry about where the information is from. It'll be from the School Building Committee and it will tell you whatever you need to know. So we currently have almost 500 people signed up for those updates and we would love to get more. We figure the more people who know about it, the better this whole project is going to be in the end. And I guess finally, I don't have too much to say because we are meeting tomorrow. Did you have any questions for us?
Thank you for getting us the money. That was huge. And thank you also for being so communicative. I see videos of you guys talking about what you've been doing on Facebook. So I think that's a very good mechanism to tell people what's going on, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I should have mentioned that we have a Facebook page too, along with the Constant Contact. And of course, on the town website, you can also get information.
No question.
Just two things, looking back on the last one. So the location's been selected and there's no complications. Now that we've done that, we don't have to go revisit that because we're now in the MSBA program. MSBA prepared to accept that.
Well, they, in part of Modular One and Two, they will ask you, have you looked at sites? And you need to talk to them and tell them what you've done. We've looked at all the sites in town and we looked very carefully at Wheelock and Dale and then used the community input. So yes, it's there. And if some towns have not looked at that, that'll be a big piece for them. But we're, you know, ready to share all of our information we have.
Okay. And then the other question I had was the, last time around, the town was not fundamentally in agreement with the MSBA around the projected enrollment.
Yes.
Do we still anticipate an issue of reconciling or getting, not, not being cross-legged with MSBA on that?
Yeah, hard to know because we're not talking to them yet, but we did a new enrollment study at this time last year. And it matched a previous enrollment study. So we're confident as to what our data is. But again, we need to sit and talk with them and show them the current enrollment study and what it says and why we're planning the size building that we'll plan for based on that. But you're right, that was a difference of opinion with MSBA and some members in Medfield.
Just wondered.
No, no, we're all wondering that until we get in the middle of it.
And the other part of the process that will be coming up is we've discussed doing the work at Dale. But what we do there is going to, we're going to accept lots of citizen input. What stays, what goes, what's reused, how it's cited, all of that. So there is nothing that's cast in even fluff yet. So as we did the surveys with the community on, you know, what we missed the first time around and where the school should go, we're going to continue that because we want to hear, we want this, we want the town to feel that they have had exceptional amounts of input to this. This is not going to be ourselves with 10 more people figuring out what this school looks like. There's going to be lots of input from all boards and anyone who wishes to engage.
And this is, I'm hoping I'm not whacking a business by even bringing this up. But it would help, and I, and I don't think you can answer the question tonight, so I'm, I'm going to put the question on the table, but I don't expect an answer. It would help me in thinking about it if, there's a lot of moving parts here. So we know FAF is closed, we know we're rethinking Parks and Rec. I don't know what that ultimate thing looks like. It would help me at some point, if you ever have a position, to know whether or not the FAF site itself would, would figure in a meaningful way in what you're all thinking about. I'm assuming right now, you're assume, you're not thinking about that at all. And I'm not suggesting that you should be, on the other hand, in trying to figure out how to answer a number of issues that the town's facing. It's not automatically clear to me that everything has to stay the way it is. So it would be helpful at, if an appropriate time comes up to make it clear whether it matters one way or the other, about how that corner of the property is used in terms of the kinds of options you can consider and the kinds of flexibility you have. It would at least be helpful to know whether it matters, so.
Yeah, I think that's very important, you know, based on what's been happening in the last few months. So it's definitely something that the committee, you know.
In the opinion of one person, I would say that corner matters.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess then I would say making, helping me be clear on in what ways it matters will help. As you're, as you're thinking, I mean, it probably matters to everybody, but in trying to think of answers for two different needs that we currently have, there's a lot of options for that second need, which may or may not be dependent upon that corner. And that corner, if I were trying to build a school, given some of the options that came up last time, where the entire athletic area was being, you know, designated for a new site for a school, having an extra corner there could make a big difference in how I think about what Dale can be, what, you know, and what else could be there and still get you the kind of school you're looking for.
Good point.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody from Parks and Rec is here, maybe they probably aren't, but.
They're going to be meeting tomorrow night.
They'll start tuning in more if, comments like that, they'll probably be paying more attention. The random thoughts that I throw out on occasion.
I was loving us.
And I just, I'll just comment reinforcing what you were just saying, Carolyn, about MSBA, Mass School Building Association. We're in Modular One, and I think just so people understand, we're in, but there are, at any given point, we could get out. In terms of, they could kick us out if we're not putting the right information, if we're not following the guidelines. That we have been given the golden ticket to go to the dance. Now we need to continue to make sure that we get the dance card checked off so we can make it to the end.
Yeah, and there are many dates and forms and procedures and, you know. But we also are very lucky because we have several people in our town who are familiar with the MSBA process.
And that's why I say that, and just to make sure people understand that that's why you're going to give dates, you're going to give timelines. These are things that we need to meet, we can't.
Yeah, no, it's very structured, which is good because you're building a building for millions of dollars. So it's very structured and can be very helpful as you.
Yeah, and as you mentioned, we've got until April 1, where we can still be doing lots of work. But our clock doesn't start ticking until April 1, so we have an advantage there.
Yeah, and Bob, you said something too, that I think people like, so there's no determination that it's new, that it's ad reno, it's that, that's still TBD. And then the architectural firm, are we given a set of architects that fall under the MSBA umbrella? And then we interview to then work with the one when it comes time for feasibility study?
As far as I know at this point, but again, that's Modular Two, not One.
In conjunction with the OPM, with the project manager, we make those decisions.
Right, so we did get through Modular One, and then if all that goes well, then you, Modular Two is when you do the feasibility and of course, you need a firm for the feasibility study, so. And I could just say this, the MSBA typically would pay for the feasibility, but because we did one on the prior proposal that failed, they won't pay for this one. So we, that money will be on the town of Medfield. We already have some money because Town Meeting has given two chunks to the SBC, but we may need more to do the, that feasibility.
Okay.
Have you looked at how much of the past feasibility study is reusable?
We are starting to work on that and absolutely 100%. Anything out of that that we can reuse without having to pay for it over again, absolutely, we will reuse.
Yeah, because there were a couple, couple of options at that Dale Street site.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, there are some things that haven't changed and will be able to use them.
That's true.
Other things we will have to do some work on.
Any questions from anybody in the audience?
I'll put another plug out then, that the Constant Contact, if you have friends and you're in some group in Medfield, an email chain, if you sign up and then you just forward them the link and explain what it is. We just need as many people as possible, especially people who may not have kids in the school system yet. Because Dr. Morrison does a fabulous job of letting people in the school system know, but if you don't have kids, you don't have access to that. And if you have young kids, you're the kids that would be going to the new Dale Street School. So we appreciate all support and passing on and trying to encourage people to stay informed so they don't come to Town Meeting in the future and say, you're building a what?
And if you're a senior member of the community, you're also going to be interested in what this will do to your taxes. So you want to be in touch with us and stay informed so that you know what's going to be happening.
Okay, all right. No more questions, I think we'll say we're good. All right, thank you so much for coming, you guys, appreciate the update. To our next agenda item, we've got Abby Goldenfarb and Dan Moore from Trinity Financial. I've got three things here, presentation of the Medfield State Hospital offsite intersection design changes, Medfield State Hospital project quarterly update. And at the end, we will vote to sign a letter of support for Trinity Acquisition proposed adaptive reuse of the Medfield State Hospital using state and federal historic tax returns. All right, good evening, good evening, everyone.
Jeff Ketterts with VHB, I also have Matt Keely, our traffic engineer with us as well. And I'd like to follow up on our offsite intersection discussions and present some of the studies we looked at for a few of the locations. And like to just present our findings and different criteria at the various locations and happy to answer any questions or talk through further as. And like to just present our findings and different criteria at the various locations and happy to answer any questions or talk through further as needed. Just a quick overview here, I think it's important to understand the locus and really emphasize seeing the relationship of these intersections together. So we just, you're, you're very familiar with, but just a, just a map of the locations. We are talking about the, the Medfield State Hospital site up on the top left there and heading southeast across the page. Down Hospital Road to Harding Street is the first intersection. Continuing down Harding is then West Street at Harding. And shortly to the east of there is Harding Street at North Street. So I just wanted to frame again the locus here and where these sit relative to each other. Essentially what we did is we went out, we got on the field survey, wetland delineations. So we had a legitimate base plan, understanding the horizontal, vertical components of each of these locations. And we took a series of the concepts that were in the original master plan, as well as some other variations we looked at together. And what we wanted to do was break them down into a series of different criteria. So each of these options, we essentially put a matrix together based on six different criteria. The first one is right-of-way impacts. Essentially, did it require any takings or easements outside of the, the public right-of-way? The next was environmental impacts, wetland resources, buffer zones. Third was traffic function and capacity, how much it improved the, the current conditions. The third one, sorry, the fourth one was safety. The fifth one was constructability and that's really anticipated timeline for construction, traffic management throughout, kind of how, how complicated of a process it would be start to finish and, and weighing that. And then the sixth one was cost. So we put some numbers toward, like to run through each of the concepts and then show the matrix. The numbers are really a bit subjective, but we, we just wanted to put them together to use as a comparison between the options that we could have a discussion on. So we can start with Hospital Road. And actually, one more thing before I know, I'd like to just do a run-through of each of those three locations. After we get there, we, we have some blowups of the West Harding, Harding-North intersection together so we can see that all. So I'll kind of go quick through those concepts. We wanted to just flash them so we were clear on which part was which of those.
And to help you go through this, Jeff, do you want to go through all of it and then at the end we can start asking questions? Or how would you prefer to give this presentation?
That's, that's totally fine. Happy to do that. I'd say whatever, whatever you think would be, would be most appropriate.
I would suggest doing an intersection by intersection.
Okay.
So let you present one, we have questions on an intersection we can ask.
Okay. Yeah, just want to get some flow here. Okay.
Great. Thank you. Great. So we can start with Hospital Road at, at Harding Street. And there were three concepts that we looked at here. Harding Street is, is kind of northwest to southeast with Hospital Road coming from the west. So this concept here is assuming that Hospital Road is a straight through and it's teeing Harding Street up to, to Hospital Road, removing the existing triangular landscape island in the middle. So Hospital would be, we through the approach from Harding Street, heading south would come to a stop, stop bar, stop sign, and then turning on to Hospital. Couple of things I think is helpful to, to understand here, certainly some topography to deal with. High side to the southeast of the plan and, and Harding starts to drop pretty, pretty significantly off as you're heading north. And then Hospital sweeping around, kind of a tight curve there. So this was, this was option one, essentially teeing Harding to a stop into Hospital. And we had a option 1A, which is next, which is a slight variation of that. And it's really just introducing a three-way stop. And same geometry as the original option, but what this does, I think from a, from a safety standpoint, there are some benefits from a traffic circulation standpoint, you kind of concede some flow on Hospital. But at the benefit of, of having a three-way stop here to, to help control vehicles turning and approaching the intersection. And then option two is the alternative to that, which is essentially holding Harding Street as a straight through and teeing Hospital Road up to it. So again, as mentioned, Harding Street is, is gradually dropping as you're heading to the northwest. So there's a little more topography for you to deal with. There's a little less pavement in this approach where you do tee Hospital into Harding. So, and then maybe I can flip to the matrix next, just for a, a quick summary. And sorry, I don't have the best of eyes. I'm going to do my best from, from memory here. But this is just an example of the, the ratings matrix we, we wanted to pull together. And I guess what I, I try to focus on is the difference between the numbers in each of the options. We used a one to five scale based on a series of the factors. So you kind of see columns one, two, five and six are, are kind of negligible from a cost standpoint, from a constructability standpoint. There are negligible impacts to the right-of-way. There's no environmental impacts in this. So it's really a wash between those concepts. I'd say the, the two factors where things are varying a little bit is, is weighing traffic operations with, with safety. As you can kind of see between option one, option 1A and option two. And I think I missed on that one.
Again, Matt Keely, traffic engineer with VHB. Just to add one thing, if you can remember from our field walk, the option, option one, which just had Harding stopped, we noted that there was some site systems issues looking around that curve there. And we had sort of talked as a group as, as a three-way stop, sort of improving that condition and not having to worry about somebody whipping around the corner. So if they're, everybody's stopping, that would improve the safety turning from Harding back onto Hospital.
So I very much appreciate your matrix, first of all. That's very helpful to me as a non-traffic engineer to understand and see how you guys rate the safety and the, what do you call it, the traffic operations capacity. So, and why is the, under that category, why is the three-way stop, which is my favorite of, of the three? Why is that one, I assume slower on traffic because it got a four instead of a five? My, I, I live next to that on Copperwood, so I'm coming in from the Hospital side. And, and what I noticed in the morning there is that the cars pile up because all the traffic is coming from Sherborne to try to get to Dover Sherborne High School. And so the people are having trouble making a left turn onto Harding at that point. So part of my thinking was that the three-way stop was an improvement for the traffic operations because then the people on Hospital Road can actually take a left onto, onto Harding.
So just to address that, the, the way we assess capacity at an intersection is based on overall delay and sort of cumulative delay. So when you introduce those two stop signs, you're just adding a little bit of cumulative delay to the intersections. That's why it's slightly lower on that.
All right.
If you leave one, one street free, they're going to be, you know, level of service A, just freely flowing. But when you stop them, they're, you're just adding a little bit of delay to the main street.
I think when you have a three-way stop, a lot of people will take turns. And so that, that will allow the people that are, that are coming from Sherborne to get their left turn to get to Dover Sherborne High School. And that'll relieve some of the, the backup there. So that's a good thing in my mind. And then the rankings are, are number one is the top one, right?
Ah, correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So my, my issue with that intersection is that the people on Hospital Road drive too, too fast. And that I definitely want them to stop because that's a very bad corner on Harding. And so that anything we can do to get Hospital Road to stop, I think is, is a very preferable. I find the three-way stop preferable because of the fact that the people are going to take turns making their entrances or their, their movements. And then the other sort of random thing that I've noticed is that, well, you don't have it there now, but there's, there's a house on a hill on, on the Harding. The new house. Next, there's a stone house at the corner. On the town side of the stone house is a house that was built by putting it up in the air about five or 10 feet higher than grade. And there's a lot of runoff from that yard onto that intersection, the way it's graded now at the moment. So that probably, you know, if, if it rained tonight, there would be, there would be ice on that corner of Hospital before it gets to Harding. So solving that is another issue in my mind. And I think that the way that the, the three-way stop is depicted it, there might be enough addition so that there, so that problem could be solved somehow. So thank you.
Yeah, and that's great to hear on, regardless on a drainage grading standpoint, we'll make sure as part of this moving forward that, that we take a look at that as well.
You put option two up on the screen. I'm in almost total agreement with Pete, but actually I have one other twist. So this, this is option two, which would be Hospital Road teeing into Harding Street. And I agree with Pete, that's preferable, I think, because the tendency of that, if, if Harding continues onto Hospital Road, the way people drive that corner, the sightlines are bad, they do drive fast. So anything to disrupt the flow at that corner to get people not to do that is an improvement. I wish you had done option 2A and done the same thing to two that you did to one. Because the only thing wrong with, I mean, you can fine tune, I, I like the 90 degree. If you had put the, I, I do believe that you need a three-way stop there. And I live up there. So usually if you live somewhere, you don't want things that will slow you down. You mentioned that going to the northwest is downhill. I have, I have to look carefully at that. It's possible right after the intersection, there is a slight downhill. That's uphill. It stays uphill. And one of the, one of the issues, and if you, if you zoomed out a little bit more, you'd realize that if you're going southeast on Harding Street downhill, the very next thing you come up on is the rail trail. So anything that causes people to come up Hospital Road at a high rate of speed and then hit a downhill stretch on a blind corner with a little left turn before they hit the rail trail, to me is a bad idea. If you can stop them at the end of Hospital Road, they won't be able to accelerate unless they're, unless they're really working it. They won't be able to accelerate enough to cause a safety problem down on, on the rail trail. So that's, that's one reason why I think that would be a, a better way to do it. I do think it needs to be a three-way stop, but I'll tell you why. Because I can, when I turn onto Junction to go home on Harding Street from Farm, it's 35, I think it's 35 miles an hour in Dover going by the, the high school. I will hit 35 miles an hour and then when I hit the, the town line, which it drops to 30, I just throw my car, I have a standard. I throw my car in neutral, take my feet off, I take my foot off the accelerator and I coast. And I'm hitting 35 miles an hour when I get to my driveway because it's that much downhill. So people that, I just do it because I do things like that. But, but people who are driving and they have their foot on the accelerator, and I also, I also incidentally walk between my house and the barn that's next to me four times a day, once in the morning, back and forth, once at night, back and forth. And I can tell you, there are a lot of people that zip by at 45, 50 miles an hour in the dark at night. And they don't, they don't even move off the fog line. If you're not three feet off the road, you're going to get your elbow hit by a rearview mirror at some point. So anyway, but long-winded way of saying, to be honest, I think the best option would be to do two, which is the tee Harding, teeing, Hospital teeing Harding, but also make it a three-way stop. If you made it a three-way stop on your, on your matrix, the safety number of four would bump up to five, I think. In which case, that actually would show up. I like, I like either option. But my own view is the better one would be a 2A. It takes what you did with one to make 1A and incorporate it into two.
You show one again, just so I can see what you're.
1A or?
So one is the express on Hospital to Harding. 1A, 1A puts three stop signs there, so everybody has to stop. One of the reasons I don't like that, it's not so bad, but when you usually have two oncoming lanes that are both stopped, those two tend to be a dominant, you know, because if one guy goes, the other one goes. And I don't think that's the road that we want to encourage kind of an aggressive driving style on. There is, there's one more reason, just you may, I don't know if you've already seen this from me, but the one other reason that's in my mind is when the state hospital is developed, this ties into the West Street 109 intersection where I'm thinking a little bit differently about what might be a good one there. I think it's going to be in our interest to want to encourage, to set up a road system so that it's attractive to people to go out Hospital to the west. And if you want to get into town, to decide that your best way into town is to go down North Meadows Road, not Harding.
Oh, not Harding.
You don't want to throw the, if you don't want to throw the traffic into Harding, you want to throw the traffic out to 109, to 27. So by making that a slightly less, you know, streamlined intersection for people on Hospital, if they want to come that way, they can. But they kind of know, oh yeah, I get to the stop sign, I got to make a right-hand turn, 90 degree versus go out to 27. I got a stop sign, probably not a lot there because only people that are coming in or out of Hospital are there. And I can get down North Meadows and perhaps if there's a roundabout at the west, north, the west North Meadows Street intersection, I like the idea of using a roundabout to get downtown better than having to meander my way through a couple of stop signs and maybe another roundabout. So there's some method to the madness that goes behind the three intersections.
I just have a question in regards to turn lanes. So when I looked at option, where Harding was a stop and you had Hospital going as the prominent road. Today, one of the things that I know we benefit with the Harding flow is that you, you can bear off to the right or you can go straight. Is there a reason why in a lot of these that we're going to see here tonight, that there wasn't a little bump out for, I'm not saying a full dedicated, but room to take two or three cars out of the flow if they don't have the, the right-of-way to?
I'm assuming the volumes didn't justify that, but not any.
Yeah, and I think generally if we want to slow people down and bring them into the intersection, we don't want to put turn lanes in there if they're not really warranted by volume. We'd rather just bring everybody into that intersection and make them make sort of, you know, not, not make a turn at speed. You know, slow down and, and make that deliberate turn.
I did have one more for me. This is probably more for them than for you. But the other reason I liked what would be an option 2A is that corner, there are, there are people that have kids on that corner. And there are pedestrians and there are people who run. And that's a really tough corner to run on because it's so blind. There's also a right of, the town has a right-of-way to the Hinkley property. And the argument that the neighbors who don't want the town to use that right-of-way have is it's so close to that corner and people come around the corner. So that's a very dangerous right-of, right-of-way. If we had that tee that is shown on option two, all of a sudden the standoff of that corner from the right-of-way makes that right-of-way less of a safety hazard.
You're talking the corner on like the southern plant, south side of the turf. Yeah, I actually like your idea of the, the more 90-degree stop on Harding, excuse me, on Hospital. Forcing, forcing the visibility, especially all three stops, but bringing that stop up. Got it. That's a, that's a good improvement.
That one has the, the added benefit of straightening out that really dangerous curve on Harding.
Right.
And I, I never even thought of the rail tail, rail trail impact. But if we made Harding just the right-of-way, right, so you didn't stop at any point at Harding, I mean, the momentum there is crazy, right? So, so the idea of today, we have a stop there. That's nothing new to anybody. So if we keep that, we keep that. Somebody coming up, if you're driving and you're going to, you're going Hospital, you're, I tend to slow down and use my directional, just to let people know that's where I'm going. So if I had to stop there, would not a game changer. And then just the pure safety of that blind turn when you go. So I think anyone in that area, and, and you know, I, I'm not trying to speak for you guys tonight, but I think we're going to give this at least a two-week, like we've got to let people hear what's going on, hear our conversation and get some feedback. I've, I've been saying, and I will say this, that like it's a generational change. So the conversations we're having tonight at three significant intersections in Medfield, two out of three bare minimum, are generational changes. And I just don't do this on a whim, like three people, like let's just go for it. I think this conversation tonight is healthy and I should like your idea. So if there was a way, do you have to do the?
Absolutely. We'll add that to the, to the matrix.
Any comments from anybody? Do we have a mic, mic that we can give? Is it off there? Oh, it is. Sorry, didn't even see it a couple. Yeah, so if anyone has any comments as we go through this evening, just please introduce yourself, your street address, and then off we go.
Chris McVan, 23 in Olmecroft. The question I had was, do these designs anticipate any additional volume once the? once the state hospital is up and running and fully redeveloped? Not only by residents, but also now it's going to become a bit of a visit, even more of a vibrant area for people to visit and things like that.
Short answer is yes. We projected out seven years into the future, including general background growth as well as the volumes associated with the hospital redevelopment.
I actually got a question from somebody on that point. So roughly 334 apartments that are, so is the anticipation that there'll be two cars per apartment, not just one-to-one? That, how did you, did you do some car association to the apartments?
Go ahead.
Mike, what can we give? Here we go. Come right at you, Abby.
It's part of our site plan approval process with the planning board. I think it's one parking space.
It's broken down between studios, one beds, two beds and three beds. So I think it starts at one and a half spaces in the studios and grows from there to be, I, I believe what the three bed.
I can look it up, but.
Okay, somebody asked, you know, now that you say that, that wasn't the, when you did the review, okay.
I could make an editorial comment back to your question, Chris. This is probably a full disclosure kind of thing on my part. When we did the site walk of the North Meadows Harding Street intersection, and we talked about things like roundabouts and one of the, one of the issues I had is, well, but you're streamlining. One of the options was to sort of streamline north, no stop sign and then stop sign Harding. So streamline to west. And if I'm wrong in, but I took away from the conversation, you guys should, you especially should correct me. But what I, what I took away from that conversation is that traffic engineers generally will equate greater safety with making it as simple and straightforward as possible for the heaviest flow of traffic through that intersection. So I get that. But as looking, in looking at intersections that are residential town streets that are being subjected potentially to higher levels of volume that is not residential town traffic, but in fact, because of ways and all these other nav systems is actually commuter cut-throughs. My view is actually I deliberately want to make some of these roads. I don't want speed bumps. I want these roads to be less convenient so they're not so enticing for the traffic that wants to basically get through our town as fast as it possibly can. So if, if I got that basic philosophy point right when we were doing the site walk, I've had a couple of months to reflect on that and said, yeah, I get that. I even understand why that might be the principle. But from my standpoint, I'm sitting there trying to be crafty about what we can do to make certain things, not impossible, just less attractive than the more preferable things we would like, like people who, high volumes of traffic use in straight, state routes as opposed to local residential streets. So there is a method to my madness on some of the preferences.
We could control a lot of the traffic there if we put a fence across Hospital Road and forced everybody to go out to Route 27.
But that's, that's a little.
The other thing that people should probably know is full disclosure is that there's been someone talking to the select board about putting in a athletic facility on the south of Hospital Road land. And so that that would be a high-traffic operation. I've driven in and out of Workx enough to see how much traffic goes to those places.
So we've flushed out Harding and Hospital.
Great. All right, one down for tonight. No, that's great. I definitely appreciate this feedback. We'll, we'll absolutely take that back and looking forward to continue to working through that. So we have these broken up. I might, I might kind of run through all of these and we did two separate matrices. And then we can kind of regroup to look at these two together if that's all right. Okay, great. So the, the next couple of slides are honed in at the West Street to Harding Street intersection. And we have two different concepts here. This, this exhibit here is holding West Street as the throughway. I think, I think kind of the, the physical features here, there, there's some, you know, no right-of-way impacts in, in either of these options. Limited environmental impacts. I think there are some wetland resources off to the north there, but nothing that would seem to weigh one option over the other significantly. I think the, the West Street cutoff does kind of have a pretty significant slope coming down to the east as you approach the intersection. And as was mentioned before, you know, the issue here is that really tight angle that the tough thing to, to have folks is, is pulling up to an intersection and having to turn over their shoulder to look through. So yeah, this, this concept here is, is showing teeing, teeting Harding up to west. There's not a ton of room to square it off there, but trying to, to at least tighten that a little bit from the, from the straight through it currently is. The second option is really similarly just, just flipping it. And it's taking West Street and squaring it off a little more to, to Harding. So again, I think kind of from a West Street standpoint, less ideal vertically where, where you're coming down the slope, but maybe a little improvements horizontally to let you tee it a little more 90 degrees into, into Harding Street. So there's probably a trade-off there between, you know, vertically what's, what's easier and horizontally what's easier. There is a driveway connection that, that would be modified under this case for the abutter right at, at the intersection. But the intent was to try to tee west as, as much into a 90-degree turn without cutting too much into that slope. We did, we did look at, you know, you can kind of see the town right away off to the left there. There's a pretty significant chunk there on the triangle of town-owned land that would be ideal to, to tee it a little more. The concern there is just the grade change. I think there's a significant drop heading down to Harding. So that's, that's the only reason why we, we didn't pull it too much further to the west. Matrix there. So I think similarly with the other ones negligible in, in the differences from a right-of-way, environmental, constructibility and cost standpoint between these two. I, I do think, and Matt, you can probably speak to the, the traffic piece of this. There was some differences in, in option two and.
Yeah, so, so operationally, if you, if you swing Harding in and stop that in the evening, it's that, it's today, it's a through movement, but it would turn into a left turn movement. It's just one of the heavier movements in the intersection. And that does not function very good, very well during that evening peak. So that's why we gave that one a two there. Teeing up west really sort of eliminates that sort of craning of your neck and rolling down the hill and people not stopping or stopping and then just rolling through until it's, it's time for them to go. So there's a significant safety improvement for that, that option, in my opinion. And operationally, that one really doesn't penalize any movements because that's the way it's operating today. It just, it's more of a safety and visibility sight distance improvement there.
Is there the ability, I think when we stood there that night, what we saw, which was crazy, so we know today west has a stop. But you have the people that are commuting home at night veering off to the left. And then you have the people going Harding. And it was a show, starting with an S, that people like almost clip in because it's still kind of a blind turn at the same time. Was there any way to improve it with putting either a dedicated turn lane or something to separate that flow? Was?
We did take a look at that and you may have taken a look at it physically more than I did. But the, the alignment of it, and it would sort of bow out and to, to get a full left turn lane to go up West Street, created some, some funky geometry.
Okay.
And I wasn't sure if there would right-of-way impacts associated with that, but.
It was more the environmental. Pushing the edge out there does start to encroach on, on some of the buffer area there. It's not in the wetlands, but it would be, it would be increasing some of that impact. So that was another reason, looking at that edge of pavement on the north side, I guess.
Because to, to develop that left turn lane, you need sort of a, a length of a taper where it gradually goes down into that storage land. You have to have a certain amount of storage for vehicles to stack up. And by the time you develop that taper, the widening is a little more significant than you might, than you might think.
We can keep going into the north and Harding intersections if that, okay, great. And then we'll have some slides to look at these together. So we have three scenarios for Harding and north. Option one here is, is holding North Street as the throughway. Harding approaching from the west would come to a stop bar, stop sign for folks who want to turn north. And then there is a, a slip lane to the right that would let through traffic continue. And Matt, I'm sorry, is that a stop or a yield?
It's, it's showing as a stop, I think.
Okay. Could be a yield.
Could I ask one question about this one particular diagram? If someone is coming north out of the center of town on North Street and wants to go onto Harding Street, what's the control? Because I didn't see a stop sign there. And I'm saying, well, they could basically take a left, but somebody coming south on North Street that wants to take a right onto Harding Street also appears to have a free flow there. So that, that just seemed like from a control standpoint, there was, there was an error or, or weakness there.
Yeah, yeah. This would be a right-of-way to this person coming south over, over north, but alternatively.
So that would be, that's the yield. That would be a yield, okay.
Unless it was.
Got it. On the diagram, I didn't see what it was. It's like, well, this would get interesting.
Trying to think of some other features. So maybe just some other existing features to, we, this area, we do have some additional wetland resources. You can see the, the grayscale line to the far right is the wetland boundary. And the, there's two offsets of it. There's a 50-foot no, no build zone, and then there's a 100-foot buffer zone. So either way, this would be something to review with Conservation Commission when we get to that point. Thinking of any other criteria. I know we do have the current central island. There is, there is a utility pole in there that, a thing we were looking at here is, is utility relocations and what impact that had. So trying to maintain that center location wherever possible, which I think is, is achievable. But yes, this, this would continue the, the through traffic from Hospital if they were going south, depending on how we wanted to control it at that southern end of the island. The second option is the roundabout. So this one, we, we took a look in here. We've looked at, at various turning vehicles that will continue to refine that. For all of these concepts, we'll continue to refine that with, with the town and with EPW. But this would essentially be an outer ring for the general traffic lane. And the, the inner ring would be, you know, varying material type just for limited, larger vehicles to make the turning movements. Access to and from the roundabouts and in separate lanes divided around the, around the roundabout. This one really gives, you know, probably clear to say, pretty equally, equally benevolent to, to all directions. And it actually, the more of these we're seeing, we're seeing more and tighter confines of space that, that isn't necessarily requiring a huge amount of, of real estate to do. So this is something that could be done within the current right-of-way limits.
No, no takings then?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, good.
And then option three is the vice versa to option one, that is holding, holding Harding as the throughway, teeing North Street up to a, to a stop before they turn. Maybe I can flip to the matrix real quick and we can look at some of these together. So I, I think the, the big one here, and especially considering the roundabout, are some of the columns from a traffic operations standpoint. There's a pretty fair benefit from that. And also from a safety standpoint, minimizing kind of the potential conflicts in turns. Granted, the, you know, we, we did also want to flag from a constructibility and a cost standpoint, certainly a little more than the other two options. And, you know, construction duration phasing might be a little more complex. But so I think between those two categories, that's what one and three are set apart a little bit from two in those respects. So if it's helpful, we do have a series of, of graphics now that show each of these options kind of transposed. And maybe I'll just do a quick run-through and happy to jump back to any of these. So these are all the first three, holding the west Harding concept same. So this is, this is our option two from west at Harding with option one at north. This is with option two at the north roundabout. And then with option three. And we just added some green hatching there just to not have anyone's eyes hurt too much. That, that green would be the resultant non-paved area just to help kind of blend between the, the aerial image below and where the roadways are. And then the next image is the same three, just flipping with option one of the West Street intersection with the roundabout and the North Street T. So happy to flip back and through any of these diagrams.
That's the Harding stop versus the west stop.
What I, what I'm, this is not the one I like. I don't like the Harding stop, but just geometrically, I can see straighter roads with this option. So I will, not soul on it, but I will acknowledge there's a straighter road configuration here, which it's not that I really want to streamline the commuter traffic, but I under, it's a simpler, it feels like a simpler intersection.
Just scary.
Combined intersection, combined intersection. Even, even hitting the roundabouts, there's probably more glancing in, interactions there with less turning.
Yeah, my only hesitation to see with that is that straightening out that length of road, it could lead to increased speeds. And the people don't even have to do the gradual left anymore if they're doing that.
I appreciate that you're talking me out of the slight crack in my thinking.
Just that bend.
I didn't, I almost didn't say that because I don't want to say it, but it's like, eh, you can see.
So the, the speed issues there for me are, are Harding Street has a 40 mile per hour speed limit. And so the people are hitting that West Street intersection where the speed limit drops to 25, but they're still going 40. And so that, that's, that's an issue in my mind. And, and that actually argues in favor of having the stop on Harding to slow them down because the people coming on West Street are already going slow because it's, it's, it's the curve between there and Dale that, or Adams, isn't allowing them to, to gain any speed really.
It's a great point.
But I guess I had, so my initial reaction was that at, at, at west and Harding, I liked Harding being the through traffic, but when I think about the speed, it, it sort of argues in the other favor of, of having the stop sign on Harding to, to get people slower before they get to town.
Then you get speed on west.
Then that feeds to what you were saying earlier, that like we, these are residential roads. They're not commuter roads. And if we make it such that going, even though I do like the roundabout, I think that that's a great flow for that area. West Street, if you think about the horrific car accident that occurred a couple of years ago, you had kids bouncing off of trees, they went so fast around that bend. So anything that forces someone when they're about to approach west to have to stop is so huge because even though it may appear to be a short road, if you're going too fast, you're either landing in somebody's backyard or you're bouncing off a series of trees. So yes, coming up Harding, you're, just because of the nature of that bend, you're, you, I think you go 40 and then it kicks into 20. I forget how many feet before West Street starts. I actually just happened to be talking to the police chief about this last night, about like where, where 40 is, where 20 is. Yes, there's some concern, but that 40, and it does, turns on my, my speedometer has a detector. I think it turns 40 kind of as I'm approaching carriage lane. So in theory, you're supposed to be slowing as you approach that, that intersection anyways, which I know our police force, if need be, if they, if we go with certain ones here, they'll, they'll be there like they were at 27 west. They're going to start enforcing and educating, not looking to give tickets, but educating, you know, what the speed limits are and what's, what's acceptable. what the speed limits are and what's acceptable. But let's do this, since you've given those.
At Harding and North, to me, the rotary is the absolute superior choice because of the safety and the traffic operations. The only thing that bothers me about that is the extra cost. And that's the one that gets us above the state money, I guess. So we'd have to put some town money into that apparently to get that done.
No, there's no town money going into these intersections. This is Trinity's project in terms of upgrading the intersections.
Okay. So that takes care of that issue for me then. Thank you. And then my, as I said, my initial reaction was to have Harding Street be the through street at West. But as I think about the speed on Harding versus the speed on West, and I would say that West is a commuter street. You said that it wasn't, I think it is.
No, it is, that's what I'm saying. It's not a residential street, people using that to just cut through our town.
Oh, I thought you heard you say that it wasn't a commuter street. It's absolutely a commuter street. So that's the only issue that's got me rethinking, making Harding stop is to slow the Harding people down. Although I don't think that's a real serious issue because the roundabout's going to slow them down in any event within a couple hundred feet, so.
We'll get, we actually went through the matrix already. So just going back to the matrix for a second, you don't have to go back to it, but just I just want to make one more point about with stopping Harding. There is, there could be some sight distance constraints when you're coming down Harding and looking up the hill because you have that curve, but there's nothing you can do above that curve. So it's, there is less sight distance available for vehicles if you were to stop on Harding. Whereas teeing up West to Harding is going to be clear in both directions.
I mean, part of me recognizes that West is a commuter traffic street for people coming from west of Medfield. So that, I guess my sense is I don't want to make the commute faster for them as opposed to having it better for our own residents. And so I think the stop sign on West is probably the way to go for me.
And we've got, do you want me to do this right now, Chris, or Wesley? There's quite a few comments that have been coming in.
Usually the three of you speak and then you'll take public comment.
Any more, if you think of the, are you done with the intersections, Pete?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I've already had a number of comments, but I'll just quickly couple through. I prefer the roundabout there. I think Pete called it traffic operations, but what I look at it as is during commuting hours, a roundabout will allow a certain priority to go to the people who are just simply trying to get to work or back from work during the whole rest of the day. A roundabout will automatically adjust to allow the people who are in town wanting to get places to get there. And so I like the fact that the roundabout is sort of a real-time adjustment as opposed to trying to figure out how to do lights. So I like that the best. The concern I had originally when we were looking at this and from your pictures, I don't think I'm concerned. I was worried that during the commuting hours, perhaps commuters coming in off of West, was there any potential that you could get a backup off the roundabout that would back all the way up to the intersection with West and also you get this big clog? But looking at your diagram, I think the distance, especially if there's that little turn at West, that distance actually just got even bigger. So I'm not worried about that. The only other observation I have is this little curly Q end at West Street, at West onto Harding. So what are the commuters doing that come down north and get on West? They're going on West so they can cross over North Meadow Street to go down west to get to Millis. And what is at the end of West Street and Millis? There's this thing called Dover Street, which is a little 90-degree turn down to a stop sign that they then have to turn right onto 109. So I just find it interesting that this thing that we're kind of agonizing over here is the exact thing that commuters put up with, for the most part, the ones that are trying to get to Millis by West rather than going out on 109.
It backs up.
Yeah, it does, but.
All right. So we've been saying all along that the roundabout is actually a great solution for North and Harding, without a doubt. I think there's a lot of benefits and you've, you both have hit on them. I won't repeat that. But the West thing, the thing that I'm pretty adamant that West is a stop. You just brought it up in terms of the blindness. If you're, if you had to come to Harding and stop at Harding and look up, and now you know these people don't have to stop and they're coming around a bend, that just scares the heck out of me. And you also have, I know Rob Tietrow has a comment here, you know, you've got residential driveways there. At least today, they know people coming and going have to stop to come in, to enter that area. So I think for the residents there, we're, by making West a stop, we're protecting them to the best we can. And then my concern, if, you just brought up something I've been thinking about, is if the rotary or roundabout starts getting backed up, what happens? If you live in Medfield and you're leaving Kingsbury Club, you're just going to take Adams Street home. Like, that's going to become the in-town residential road that if you're just trying to get around Medfield, you're just going to go down. And so that's not good because you have a school on that street. But I think we have to acknowledge that there is a road that runs parallel to what we're trying to manage right now. And I don't want to stick our head in the sand and not say that Adams Street is now going to become a default. And then from there, you can cut off how you want, whether you want to cut by the police station, whether you want to cut down to Ferry. But I'm not naive to think if it starts getting to be a cluster there, you're just going to avoid it by taking a street that, again, wasn't really designed for the traffic flow that we may potentially be sending that way. But I think, I think the roundabout does certainly help, especially when we stood there that night and we saw how many close calls there were. It was ridiculous. And as much as I know we would love the idea of putting a traffic light there and really controlling it, I think, and I do appreciate you showing them side by side so people have a better feel for the flow. And we've definitely looked at safety. And the one thing with the, and I did, I talked to Chief yesterday about the conversation we're going to have tonight. There's a lot of bicycle traffic on North and Harding, right? I mean, I think if I'm not mistaken, the mass, the mass challenge. So the one thing manageable about that roundabout is you are approaching it, all the cars are approaching it in and around 30 miles an hour. And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if a cyclist gets in that roundabout, they have the right-of-way till they get off. Just the, we just want to make sure for pedestrians as we go down this path, are we making it easy for, there's a lot of people that come through that center, that area of town to walk uptown that just, we look at the crosswalks and keep it as safe as possible.
Yes, yeah, agreed. And even kind of regardless of the options, that's moving forward. That's something we'll continue to work with EPW and the town and making sure that we're taking the complete streets approach and analyzing sidewalk pedestrian connections as well. You know, it might just be crossings and landings if we're not necessarily connecting them now, but it potentially tees you up for future connections at least.
So I'll certainly toss the microphone out to anyone in the audience that may have any questions regarding the intersections we just talked about. You can grab that right there, Laurel, if you want.
Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street. Just a comment about Adams being used as a through street. No left or right turns between the hours of three and six.
That must have been a bad idea.
But I, I, yeah. I, you know, it's funny, I was, when I've thought through some of these options, and I mean, I know in Westwood and other surrounding towns, there's all these like no seven and nine, no seven and nine, unless there's a police officer there, people are doing. They do it at Westwood every morning, cut through. Again, Westwood deals with this the way we're dealing with it with people just take all the backroads in Westwood to avoid the backup on 109 to eventually get out to 95, 128.
I don't do that, so maybe tickets would be good. But Westwood also has a nice sign that says, please be courteous to people entering from the side roads. That would be wonderful when you get to Green Street.
And the side roads have speed bumps.
Not Green Street.
No, in Westwood.
No, I know.
And then maybe something like down the road, we actually look at if people are going to start to use roads that were never designed for the potential traffic flow that we may be seeing here. Because the, you know, the point being made, the state hospital hasn't been built yet, but that's 334 apartments if everything stays on track. And then any development that may go on, on the other side of the road and, you know, to the one that we just, that Pete referenced and that we've all met with, that, you know, if a complex goes in there that brings more residents from out, excuse me, more visitors from out of town, that's that much more traffic that's going to be coming from the main roads, whether it be 109 or 27.
I would say that from a philosophical standpoint, rather than making the suburban, the residential roads more difficult for people, if we have more traffic coming in, it would be better to make the state roads or the major thoroughfares more attractive. I'll give you an example to your point, Laurel. My wife, when she goes to where she works in Foxborough, when she leave, and we live on Harding Street, when she leaves West Street, because it's a light signaled, she gets to West Street, she has to take a left onto 27. Nobody lets you in. So she, instead, she'll use Adams Street and come out Dale because she wants to take a left and she has a better shot at doing that because she doesn't have all that West Street traffic coming in from Millis. So my point is, so yeah, you could say you can't do that, but basically what you're doing is you're basically saying, we're going to make the smaller streets so, we're going to make them harder for you. We're not going to fix the bottleneck on the major street that's presumably designed to handle larger volume. So I understand sometimes you have to do that. So I'm not saying you can never do it, but it's far better, I think, to go look for the solution. And how do you make the major thoroughfares easier for people to navigate? Because all things being equal, speed limits are higher there. Generally, they're a little more safely designed. So if I don't, if I don't get abused there, I'd rather be on that if I'm just trying to get somewhere else.
All right, so I'm going to read some comments. We've got 11 comments typed in here. The first one actually from Chris Potts, this is regarding MSBA. I'm just going to read it, but I think Carolyn touched upon it and I can certainly follow up, Chris, tomorrow. But super important for public to know that the biggest decision in MSBA Module One is deciding on the enrollment projections to determine building size. At the MSBA orientation meeting, did MSBA touch on that step at all by chance? I can't recall, but Chris, I will follow up because I know Bob Maney and Carolyn have left the meeting. I apologize for seeing this late in the discussion. Alvin LaSaro, we do miss you here, Bill, your seat is open back there. Comment, as in prior studies for the development, I feel that the residents will make more use of Harding Street rather than Route 27 to get to Wellesley, Route 16, et cetera. It doesn't look like this will solve the, solve that issue. I think that's something you were tagging upon, but. Rob Tietrow, 12 West Street, I wholeheartedly support option two. Option one creates drivers to gain even more speed to come up and down West Street. We already have a difficult driveway to navigate. Option one would make it even worse. Sharon, West stop would help with speed so as, so much better than Harding stop. People are flying, continuing Sharon, people are flying on West, so anything to slow them down is great. Hilly Puss, could the presenters please address how these various solutions affect bike riders and pedestrians slash runners as they cross these intersections? And I'll give you one second, I'll keep, there's a few more that. Rob Tietrow chimed back in, agree, Eileen, West Street traffic is a narrower, blind curve road. Teeing West Street off is the only answer. Sharon Tietrow, as a resident of 12 West for the past 20 years, this has needed to happen for a long time. We fully agree to put a stop at West and a roundabout at North. West has a major speed issue in addition to the sight lines. We have seen way too many accidents with horrible injuries and it's time to make a change and find a way to make this safer and slower. Someone from iPhone, and this is why I'm going to this one, Jeff, because I saw this question. How will residents cross the rotary? We walked from Harding across north up the town. How will this work with the rotary? And then one last comment from Hilly. I agree with Eileen and Pete on preferring a stop at West. Not only is there a blind spot coming from Harding, but I am also worried about the speed of cars that would come down the hill on West going toward Boston, creating into the intersection without a stop. So those are all the comments. Two of them do address the concern about crosswalks and access to that area.
Sure. And yeah, I might say, we didn't, we didn't show that detail in these concepts yet. I would say that's absolutely something we would incorporate in design and work with the town. I think, you know, we would look at each of these and if there were meaningful connection points to be made, making those. If not, you know, some of the locations don't have sidewalks in the vicinity of them, but there's no reason we couldn't include crossings and safe landings at a minimum, which is, which is what we would look into as part of the design.
So the thing that I've noticed is just a random observer of roundabouts is that the traffic ends up going so slowly that the drivers see the pedestrians and tend to defer to them.
So the gentleman that was on the iPhone 12, excuse me, iPhone, commented that he lives at Three Harding, so direct impact. So I think what, James, if you just saw, or you just heard, excuse me, what was commented, that you guys will look at that and we'll see more as this moves, as we select the sites and move forward. Okay. Any more comments? Okay, so this is going to be my suggestion, and you guys can tell me otherwise, but instead of voting on anything tonight to give that, at least, we have another meeting coming up in two weeks to give residents a chance to give additional feedback. I think we've, we're kind of going down a direction where I'm confident that we've, we've got some agreement with what may make sense, but I don't think it's, it's the right thing for us to do tonight to jump on and just move forward. But if two weeks works for you guys.
I think the sentiment was fairly clear here, and the three of us where we think we should go at this point. I had, before this meeting, I had thought possibly we ought to have a public hearing or something for people. But I don't know that, I don't think we're being that controversial in what we're saying is important. And I'm partly just using this random sample of people who came to our meeting that seemed to be nodding most of the time to think that's true. But if there was a way for us to reach out to the neighbors that are in close proximity to these intersections and just say, listen, just want to make sure you are aware, this is discussed, and the select board would like, if you have any comments that you want us to consider before our next meeting, we're going to vote on this, we'd like to do that. What stuck with me is the, I forget her name, another lady that joined us for the sidewalk.
Renee Halli.
Yeah.
At Three Harding.
Yeah. Okay, that's her.
Yeah, she, she wasn't feeling well, so she wasn't able to come in person, but she.
That, that was, that's been in the back of my mind for a while. It's like, okay, somebody like that. There's also happens to be a new resident in town that moved in who has a dog that my dog likes a lot that I ran across at the state hospital. They've been here since the spring and they're, they're like in one of the first Harding Street on the other side of the street, right at the intersection. I think this is better for everybody that lives close to the intersections, but it would be nice to know that for sure.
I did send an email with the plans to all of my immediate neighbors. The people around Copperwood Road, Clayton and that area all got the plans.
I know Christine, excuse me, Chris had it in Medfield Insider and she had a great link. Like, it was very easy to see what you guys had presented. So I, I know Chris is on remotely tonight, so hopefully she will follow through. And I think where we're leaning, correct me if I'm wrong, is the Harding and Hospital is the two-way, right? So straightening out, but still making a three-way stop. The West and Harding is West is a stop, but you're, you're bringing it, that stop sign further to the street so that the one resident there that would be impacted would be the neighbor that has that driveway. So again, I don't know how we reach out to them to just, again, make sure they're aware and somebody's out there under their driveway in a couple of months and they're asking why, potentially. And then the third is the roundabout would be the preferred way to address the Harding and North. So that's where we're headed, but we certainly are looking for feedback.
And we'll just need to analyze the hospital and Harding as a three-way stop. I'm confident that it'll, there won't be any issues, but just to make sure. We'll add that to the matrix and to our.
For what it's worth, I think we actually went with, in a couple of years, you had two number one options, but I think we agreed with all your number one options. The two-way was the only modification, even that wasn't. That was in line with what you just did, just didn't do that one out.
I just think it improves the line of sight. At the end of the day, I mean, instead of being so far back, bringing it forward makes it so much. All right, so good with that?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, and then Abby, Medfield State Hospital project quarterly update.
Two weeks from tonight? January 25th.
Okay, great, thanks everyone.
You need a microphone, either up here or.
From this far away. Thanks, everyone. Good to be here tonight. Happy New Year. This is the last time I say Happy New Year. One week. So what we'd like to do tonight is update you on a few. So what we'd like to do tonight is update you on a few items. One is just review the critical path items to closing. The second is to give you an update as to what we've been working on and what we foresee as the next milestones, and then just talk about our hopes for continued partnership with the town of Medfield. Next slide, please. First, just a reminder, sorry, you can go to the next one Frank, thanks. The critical path items to clothing, to closing are the state and federal historic Part II approvals, significant allocation of state historic tax credits, funding the extraordinary costs of public infrastructure, and the hazardous materials remediation, and then securing private debt and equity for the project. So I will update you as we go on. Next slide, please.
There we go.
Great. So where we are with the project is last year, we submitted a second one-stop expression of interest, entering that second funding round, that was complete, and the town and Trinity secured an additional $500,000 in Mass Works funding that was announced last year. One of the key items was engaging with EverSource on their electric infrastructure design, and this was, this is something we struggle with on every project, but the town was very helpful in connecting us with a contact at EverSource. So that work has been done, and EverSource has been paid the amount that we anticipated paying from the funding received from the first Mass Works award. We coordinated, as you saw tonight, with the town of VHB to execute the contract for infrastructure design. This infrastructure design development is pretty much complete, except for a change order which you approved last month to have the onsite electrical infrastructure design completed, and that work is ongoing, but for the most part, we would say the design development of the public infrastructure is complete, and also the design development for the buildings is complete, and I'll walk you through that in a second. We have submitted, we've submitted many applications to Mass Historic, but we're now at a point in time where we're actually getting allocation for Mass Historic. And just to let you know, in August, we received our first allocation of 2.7 million, and at the, last week came in, we received $5.7 million in additional state historic tax credit awards for our application we submitted in August. So this is huge. I cannot tell you, this is a huge moment for the project, because we had anticipated for the buildings receiving $8 million in Mass Works historic tax credits. We've now received 8.4 million, and we are still eligible to apply to more, for more. So what this means is that future funding we receive for Mass Works will help us cover additional costs, I'm sorry, future funds that we receive from Mass Works and from Mass Historic will help us cover additional costs such as the off-site infrastructure. So this big amount that we're chasing from the state for infrastructure can be offset by some of these historic tax credit awards. So this is, we're like at a really good point. We don't, we don't have it all, but we're on our way to securing more money. So that was a great way to start the new year. Next slide, please. I want to talk about the progress we've made on the building design. We have sent these documents to the town in addition to the infrastructure design work that VHB has done, but this means we have advanced the plans for the state hospital beyond the conceptual plans that you guys have seen. We have done a tree preservation plan, we have detailed entry and drop-off areas for every building programmed, the outdoor use for the site done, you can see on this image right here, street character plantings and, and design. We have picked proposed lighting systems, you know, streetlights, bought smaller lights for walkways. So really taken the plans to the next level. They're not construction drawings, that's the next and final step, but we have advanced them to the point where we feel they are ready to submit to MIPA and to the Medfield Historic District Commission. If you go to the next slide.
Before you leave that one, what's a wooner?
A wooner. That's a great question, and I will show you what it is. It's basically a street that can be blocked, is blocked off to traffic, except in certain instances, so we have proposed it, and I'll show you where on our site we've proposed it, but it's right by Building 26, which is in the center of the site, so we could have food truck festivals or an art fair on it. So it's something we contemplated in the original design, but yes, it's a word we all have learned with this project. Next slide, please. This, it's hard to read for me even looking at it, but you'll see in the background of this slide, this is just one subset of the, the plan for the site, where we have the topography in the background. We have, we are now showing where plantings are, where walkways are, where handicap access is for each and every building. Next slide, please. And this is all detailed in a set of, how many pages? Hundreds of pages for folks to pour through if they want. Dan is, is going through them page by page.
One sec, grab, grab the mic if you wouldn't mind.
Oh yeah, the part highlighted here in dark gray is that wooner that we talked about, so an area of pavers, again, outside of our main community building. There will be, you know, delivery trucks there for delivering mail, but there are also, this is a space to have events, you know, in addition to where the art.
Abby, on that, on that, on that design, is, is the Lee Chapel down below?
Yeah, the Lee Chapel is south of this.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Building 26. Yeah. Next slide, please. This gets into kind of further design development. We are further clarifying, as you know, there are 27 historic buildings. There's also Building 10, which is not a historic building. So we have been just detailing what is in the buildings that aren't residences, so further refining plans for management and leasing center, clubhouse, Building 28, which was the old tuberculosis building, is going to be reimagined as a wellness center, so fitness, a couple of outdoor wooden saunas. Building 10 will be a new mail and package area, indoor pickleball, dog daycare area, maintenance shop. So really digging into working with the property management company, how this site functions. We've had conversations with different trash companies, garbage companies, with, Dan has had many conversations with the postmaster about mail delivery, so really figuring out how does this site work? And then again, digging into the buildings, what we need to do for exterior repair and renovation, detailed information on windows and doors. And so again, hundreds of pages of this information, given that there are 27 historic buildings, but much more detailed information. Next slide, please. So this is kind of a very basic, one of the drawings that detail kind of what Building Five will look like, from what it looks like now, you know, showing the new roof system, how we will treat gutters, windows, how they're expected to look, different entry scenarios with different railings. So this is what our design team has been focused on. As you know, we've mentioned over, I think it was in the spring, Mass Historic and the National Park Service asked for more detailed information, so that information they've received, and then this allocation of historic tax credit awards from Mass Historic really says they've, they've bought into this, what we've proposed. So a great point to be at for the project. Next slide, please. This is, again, much more detailed information on all of the different window types, typical window types at the, the state hospital, and kind of proposed reconstruction and sections of the windows and what they'll look like. Dan is out there, has been out there taking windows out, as you know, measuring them. We've been talking with window manufacturers. So really digging into the details that make this project real, and that are necessary for us to proceed.
Are the windows standard sizes, or do you have to build a window for each opening?
Fortunately, the openings that were built into these buildings, there's not, there's in, in the grand scheme of things, there's almost, there's over 3,000 windows, and, but there's not too many types. And I've gone out to pretty much all the buildings and tested measuring the openings. The openings are actually pretty consistent. They're not all the same size, but if you look at a certain type of window, they're pretty much made that the same type. So our architect basically tried to make it as simple as possible and say, okay, we're going to pick window types and try to make this sort of as simple as possible, but still match all the historic, you know, relevance that we need to.
So that's that drawing up in the top right, where, where we've compiled window types, assigned them to each specific building, measured them, and then those will become the basis of when we go out to bid for pricing, different subcontractors will, will know what we're looking for. Next slide, please. Again, this shows more detailed information, again, on unit layouts that our architect has done based on feedback from Mass Historic and National Park Service, structural plans based on our initial structural investigations at the site, proposed HVAC plans and plumbing plans based on, again, all of our investigation and what we know about the building so far. So this is applicable to, these are unique to every, actually, a lot of the buildings come in pairs, they're, you know, opposite, on opposite sides of the site, they're mirrored, so you will see, but regardless, no building is exactly alike, so we have these for every, every building. Next slide. So where we are today is, as we said, we're at 100% infrastructure design and have completed the hazmat investigation. We still have Building 28 to go, which is the tuberculosis building, which you signed off on that remediation last time we met. We also have the design development plans as well. So our plan is, over the next two to three months, we will be going out to a number of different contractors to get their initial look at pricing. We've done this exercise before with two contractors, we're expanding the, the group to get more feedback and more thoughts on that. We are also planning on submitting our third application for historic tax credits on January 15th, and then following that, we will be submitting to the Medfield Historic District Commission for their approval as well. We could wait till we are at, you know, 100% construction documents, but we don't think that makes sense, because we'd like their sign-off going into the next round of state and city or town permits. We will also be preparing documents for the public bid for the off-site infrastructure improvements that you talked about tonight. Those have been funded with the first Mass Works grant, so we will, as well as some limited onsite utility. So that work will be done, knock on wood, everything goes well. It could be done as early as summer to fall of 2025. We are also going to be getting pricing back from general contractors on the public infrastructure and buildings, and this will inform our next Mass Works application to the state. Our hope is now that we've refined some, some of the details of the site, that we can get better pricing. We will also be in March submitting to MIPA for, to close out our MIPA permits, and this is a, as Bill Massaro, I know he's watching, he will be reading all of those, our single environmental impact report that we submit to the state, and likely providing great comments, Bill, so don't, don't go to sleep for the winter and hibernate, you have reading ahead of you. April, we'll be submitting our fourth application for state historic tax credits. May, we'll be submitting another one-stop application for public infrastructure funding. In June, we hope to be June to July wrapping up all of the major town permits, once we're through the MIPA process. At that point in time, you know, our big chase now is, continues to be kind of narrowing the gap with the public infrastructure funding, and then seeking a private equity partner and securing our, our construction and permanent loan for the project. So we see the light at the end of the tunnel, we feel like we've made significant progress. A lot of it is seen in our own, you know, small victories that we have, but the, the state historic tax credit victory that we just shared is, should make everyone extremely happy and feel positive about the progress. Next slide, please. Continued partnership. So our hope tonight is, just to communicate, it's really important for us why we come here, asking for your thoughts on the off-site intersections. The state is looking to Medfield to see, do they really need the money, or they just, you know, does the project really need this money for new roads, or, you know, is this real or not? And we want to communicate that this is real, we're moving forward, we want to do this work, so your decision-making on this is really critical, as well as your support and continued support for our submissions to Mass Historic and our third submission to the one, to the state for Mass Works funding. Our LDA extension expires in March, so we will be seeking another extension of this. We've commenced conversations with Christine, but have not seen a draft of this, but we will be seeking an extension, and we will continue to update everyone and come back, you know, as needed, quarterly to give you an update as to where we are.
Abby, about how long an extension are you looking for?
I believe we're looking for about 18 months, so.
18.
I think to, to say by a year from March feels like, there's a little bit of insurty right now, just given the change in federal administration, interest rates, the market, construction costs, we'll know better, I think, where we are after we get this preliminary pricing back, but again.
September 26th, then.
Yeah. Listen, we would love to be in the ground next March, just in terms of, do we all want to spend the time kind of negotiating another extension? But we feel like we, this news about the historic tax credits really boosted our confidence that the state is behind us, and that like we're chipping away at it, and we're going to get there.
That was a big proportion of the historic tax credits the state probably awarded that year, wasn't it?
I believe so. I don't know yet about the other awards, but I know it was more than double what we received in the first round, so. So that's.
And did you say you're going to apply two more times or four more times?
We're going to apply, we're going to keep applying. So, you know, we're going to apply till we, till they say no. We are eligible to apply for up to 20% of the total cost of the, of the project.
Oh, great.
So, you know, a lot of developers continue to apply when they're under construction and we will do that. But our hope is to have secured a substantial amount a year from now, in the next three rounds of 2025. So we're feeling, we're feeling we are, we're building momentum, or there's momentum right now and we're, we're pretty excited.
So another question about, I don't understand the lingo here. H W I P slash U P P?
Yes. So the H W I P, that's the Housing Works Infrastructure Program. That's what, together with the town has applied for, received now $5 million. That's what's funded the VHB work, that's what's funded the Eversource work and the off-site infrastructure improvements. So we'll continue to apply for those.
And the One Stop, is that, is that the Mass Works sort of successor or something?
Yeah, that's the Mass Works. That's the Mass Works.
I wish the state wouldn't change the names on me. I don't have that much brain capacity to keep up.
We agree.
Yeah.
There's a question in the, in the chat.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to keep going because is that the last slide?
I think I'm done, yeah.
Okay, I didn't want to, okay, perfect time, okay. So let me go to, are you done asking questions in general for Abby right now?
I actually had a couple more, Abby, if you wouldn't mind. I had sort of had in my mind the 25 million for the infrastructure that you needed, 25 to 30 million. How much of that do you think you guys have now? I know you heard, you say you could use the historic tax credits.
So for the infrastructure, we estimated it to be 30 million and we've secured 5 million. So we're still chasing around 25 million for the infrastructure.
And is that with the One Stop grant?
That's with the One Stop. The One Stop is really the application form that you apply for these funds through. So 25 million. But again, the more money we can bring in, in historic tax credits, that can offset that amount, so.
And you need that to be able to convince the lenders to lend, I guess.
Yes, the project, the, if you include that in the, in the project, not as a separate grant, it's, it's too expensive for the lenders. They don't get the returns though, or the investor won't get its return.
Yeah, okay. That's all for me. Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
I have a dumb question. I know it's dumb because you just said, this 5 million infrastructure so far. In my head, we've gotten two Mass Works grants, am I wrong?
One was just under 5 million and the other was 500,000. So we've got two so far.
Ah, so we've only gotten one year's worth of.
We have, the first year was just under the 5 million.
Yeah.
And that's how we're doing the, the roadway improvements and the site infrastructure.
Right.
And then we just recently, recently received $500,000.
Are we still expecting to get another, expecting is too arrogant a word to use here, for five, are we, are we still looking forward to the possibility of getting another $5 million Mass Works grant for a second year?
Yes, that's the plan. So we are, our plan is to, we actually asked the state for the full amount. And the, the state said, we can't do the full amount at once, we could do it in phases. We don't think this project makes sense to do it in phases. We think once you start, we need to keep going. So we've presented a phased, a phased plan for applying for the funds such that when we start, we could keep applying, but keep construction going.
Okay.
We're now in conversations with, just given where CAM is in their timeline, it looks like they might potentially be part of this first phase. So we're contemplating a strategy where we go in with CAM on the Mass Works application and all, we're, we're thinking about ways to strategize and to make our application more attractive to the state, working with CAM. And hopefully by the time this next Mass Works application is due, hopefully, knock on wood, we'll, we'll get some more historic tax credits. So we'll lower the ask. That's our hope. Our hope is to be able to say, well, we thought it was 25 million, you know, it's potentially 20 million and this is how we can attack it. That answers your question.
Sure, but let me tell you what I think I heard you say in my mind, to keep track of everything we're doing in this town, I have to simplify it down to things that are oversimplified, undoubtedly. When this started, you were looking for, I thought it was 25 million Mass Works funding and hoping to get it right away and that would have been able, and then you found out, no, Mass Works, no, we don't give anybody more than 5 million. And then the first year was 5 million. And then in my head, this is nothing you said, but in my head, I said, so if you need 25 billion and Mass Works only parcels it out at 5 million a year, then something that perhaps you're hoping to get at the very start or within the first year or two, it's going to take five years to get all the way to that 25 million mark. You mentioned that you've got the tax credits now and that could potentially help offset that project cost. So the good news is there, so maybe it's not 5 million, five years to get to the 25 million through Mass Works. Why would we back off on asking, this is a genuine question, why would we back off on asking for $5 million a year for Mass Works for a project that's delivering 334 units of housing in a state that's, all they can talk about is housing?
We're, we're not backing off on that. The reason why we didn't ask for that, though, last year was because we couldn't spend it. Like, we were told we can start onsite infrastructure unless we own the.
I got, yeah, I get that, okay.
And we had no plan to take that on in fiscal year 2025. We've projected out, well, if we start in, in September 2026, by then we will have accrued this much, you know, in awards that we could take down the project, close on the project and start construction.
Got it, okay.
We're also looking for a forward, I mean, at the same time, we're looking for the state to say, we will show up for you for 25 million. That's, that's our strategy. It's, the state is, you know, it's, it's a long conversation, so.
But I think that goes back to what Abby said at the beginning, is that the state has made an indication to us that they're concerned we're not spending the money fast enough. And that's why we also reduced, for this most recent Mass Works grant, reduced our request down because we hadn't spent the first years yet. So we got a significant amount of questions from them over this last year as to the spending of the funding. So that's why you're getting a little pressure from Abby to move forward on the, citing the intersection designs so that we can spend down that 5 million.
So however ignorant this comment may be, in my mind, the issue, and this has nothing to do with everything I've seen from Trinity, I have faith in your, your, your good faith in doing this. I don't, if, if you can't do it, I don't think the town can get it done. So there's no, so we're, we're clearly in a boat together.
Yep.
And, and I think we're clearly confident that everybody's rowing. As a select board member, and I'm not, I'm saying this just to show you how I'm thinking, I'm not trying to twist arms. As a select board member, when we have not sold the property legally, I have to contemplate the possibility, maybe improbability, but possibility that somehow this isn't going to work. And then, so I think the reluctance certainly, I've probably contributed as much, the reluctance to go whole hog on infrastructure, that is infrastructure unique to a project that we are highly confident is going to happen, but that hasn't happened, it hasn't happened far enough to where we know it's going to happen. We just are highly confident it's going to. So it, I wrestle with how much money from, even though it's state money and even though you could probably say, well, you guys did it to us, so go pound sand. How much state money can you put into a project which is specifically designed to carry a particular project out before, this maybe is a mirror image of what the investors are doing, they're saying, am I putting money in before I know something's here? And I'm saying, how do I think about how to commit money to doing something which will enable a project which we are not yet at, completely at the fork in the road where we know everything's on track? That's, that's not a criticism, it's just the way I'm thinking, Abby.
Yeah, I mean, I, quite frankly, like, I, I unders, we think it would be great. We think these are, these are going to be town, we, these are going to be town-owned roads. We do think if this project, well, we wouldn't be here, I mean, we've been here for how long? I, I don't even know.
So long.
But.
You can be both.
But we think, I mean, our opinion is, this is, if this project doesn't happen with us, you're going to own, right now you have obsolete roads, obsolete infrastructure. This investment benefits the town. I know you said if this doesn't happen, it's going to be a dog park. I, I don't really see that.
No, I, well, I don't see.
I've heard that, I've heard that, like, if, if you don't do it, what's going to happen? You know, I think the town getting the money from the state to rebuild the infrastructure and rebuild the roads, it's a great piece of land in a great town, I would.
So here's, here's my, here's, so, and again, I'm not doing this to twist arms, I want you to understand how I'm thinking. Here's how I'm thinking about it. Right now, the trajectory we've been on with affordable housing, because of things that we couldn't get the money as quickly as we were hoping to be able to get it, we have a stellar, you have a stellar project. It's stellar on historic grounds, it's stellar on town culture grounds, and it's stellar, or it should be seen as stellar on state grounds. If this thing doesn't go, and we already have 10% affordable housing, and the state continues to have us come up with new schemes for how to undermine our local authority and our zoning authority to try to force us to do things, the last thing I'm going to want to, personally, I would want to entertain as a fallback, if this particular wonderful project doesn't happen, is another large-scale housing project. So when I made the flip comment about the dog park, what I'm saying is, I think we have a conversation in this town about, do we value open space? What, or if we, we think we should do something with the property? It doesn't necessarily look like, doesn't look like the Pulte project because we couldn't get the Trinity project through. It's something else and it's probably not something that comes anywhere close to 334 affordable housing units, speaking personally.
Yep. And I want to try to keep this conversation going, because poor Mo, I know is back there, we've got another contract, it's going to be a while.
So one last question, then this is one other little check mark that's in the back of my mind, it's probably, I hope it's off the table. About a year and a half ago, I was satisfied that Trinity was confident enough that the gun range issue was going to get handled, that I gave it a check in light pencil and I've put it to the back of my mind. Is that still where it belongs?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last point. I, I think you guys should be, you can write letters, you should be, like, we welcome your, you know, phone calls to the secretary, but again, what they're looking at is Trinity, or the town was awarded 4.5 million and has only spent 1.2 million in.
And that's, and that's because the town has told you you can't spend it, right?
No, 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 no. We, the town was awarded 4.5 million in 2023. We've paid a million plus to Eversource to do their design, some money to VHB, like, guys, we got to spend this money or it doesn't look like we need it.
And the way to spend the money is on the infrastructure.
Is the off-site intersections, let's get out to bid ASAP.
Infrastructure at the site too, right?
Well, that we need more money for, but yes, I mean, ideally, yes, but we respect that you're not ready for that, to take that leap of faith.
That's where the town has held you up, we haven't allowed you to go ahead with that.
No, but I have to clarify something.
You don't have money yet to do that. You don't have the money to do the infrastructure.
You don't have enough, you don't have enough money to make it impactful. You have enough to start, and then if you were to get, you were to get stopped dead in your tracks, the funding doesn't come through, we have a half-built road and we have to go pitch it to somebody else and they're like, we don't really need the road right there. And then we have to go back to the state and say, thank you very much, we just blew your money because that road, so, so I think that, I, I hear what you're saying, that we, we've been waiting to do this intersection thing for a while, so trust me, Christine knows, I've been like a pain in the neck asking where we're at. So I'm thrilled we're here tonight to finally talk about that. Hopefully in two weeks, we can get enough feedback, you move forward there.
Right.
The, the, we know that the money needs to be spent, we want to spend it, and we hope you're getting more so that we can make a dent, that's a committed dent, that you can't walk away from it, right? Because the worst thing is that you, we start, the money comes to Medfield, it doesn't come to Trinity, right? So if it comes to Medfield and we misappropriate that money by building something that does not actually come to have any value, because the next developer says, you know, the $7 million you spent, we don't really need it because that's not the direction we're taking this property? We look like.
That would, that just would, I mean.
No, I get that, but, but.
The developer came in and saw new roads, new, I mean, at $30 million.
But if they weren't going to refab the buildings and they were going to tear them down and do 700.
Then you probably wouldn't sell it to them, I mean.
That's the only thing, just, that's, that's the only reason we've had to kind of tread cautiously, that we can't predict the future, we can't embarrass ourselves in front of the state because that's who they're giving the money to. So I think what we're doing with the infrastructure on the roads, I think what you're doing with Eversource, I love that you're talking with CAM and you guys are trying to figure out, how can we, how can we bring the message to the state that this is like a value add for the cultural side of things and what, what Belfort is working on and what you're doing. But I definitely want anyone listening here thinking like, oh, we're, we're, we're not letting you guys move forward just because we don't want you to, that's by far the last reason.
We just need to spend the money that we have and, and you're helping in kind of making the decisions on the off-site infrastructure now is the best way we can spend money to demonstrate, yes, we need it. And, and then we're back at, I mean, we're back at it, applying for more, I mean, the state knows, they know, we're, we're, we're here.
So I do have a question from a resident and we, we've kind of danced around it, but we haven't given the answer. So Matt Perillo, 44 Evergreen Way, using optimistic assumptions based on where we are today, what are Trinity's estimates on when construction in-ground would begin? And we're sounding like right now potentially September 2026. And then when best case, would it end, right? This is a neighbor wondering, when is it all going to come to an end?
Yeah. Dan, I, I pass it to you, we said 30 months.
30 months?
Yeah.
Okay, so just say three years?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Unless we start devil inside.
So September 2029-ish.
Yeah, I would just use three years because, and, and just again, to clarify in case anyone's listening to this, the LDA, we had built into that two six-month extensions.
Right.
So we agreed, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, that we, we were okay with that. So that brings you.
They were automatic extensions.
They were automatic extensions, but, but they had to ask and you did back-to-back and not two separate ones.
Right.
So that brings us to March of 2026.
No, 2025. So we will be formally asking for another extension.
Okay, to fall of 2026. Okay, perfect.
I think you have, you have a raised hand too.
Oh, I didn't see.
Yep, so I can.
I just had a random question. Have you guys looked at doing the attics and the basements at all, using those? Those are such big spaces.
We've, we've contemplated a couple of them, using them, but we, because we, we could add more units, but we're not going to, you know, we, we've been.
This is where you age me, Abby.
This is where if we wanted to make it 500 units, we would be looking at that, but we've set it at 334, so we're, we're at the max.
So I don't want a few.
Jeff can talk if you want to. Hi, Jeff.
Wait a minute, we got it, you're kind of soft, give us one sec, we're just going to get your voice up there. Not that you're soft, my neighbor, you're not, you're going to get the volume. Can you put the microphone there?
Yeah.
Hello, hello?
Can you go a little bit louder if you wouldn't mind? All right, fire away there, Jeff.
Hey, guys, Jeff, I'm in Metacomic Street. Appreciate the update from Abby. Just on the side of the timing and just hearing about the extensions, I, I think about the buildings today as they exist. And, you know, walking up at the hospital and having, you know, decades of facilities experience, these buildings are experiencing the weather, the water, the sun, everything. So I guess my question is, are we concerned about that, the condition of the buildings? Because when you look at them, I mean, there's just roof openings happening, you know? And so the question is, I think we still own the building, so I'm assuming, you know, Medfield has the responsibility here to care for them. So are we, are we budgeting? I'm sorry if I haven't dug into the details, I'm sure everybody knows it but me, but, you know, what is the budget then for these upkeep? Because essentially, we keep talking about the future as if these buildings are just going to stand there as they. as they are perfectly, and that's not the case. The buildings are, it's heartbreaking to see the condition. So what do we, what, what can we do to, 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 to make sure that what Trinity will be accepting, you know, is gonna actually work? And not be destroyed from the inside out?
It, it's a great question. Uh, we did apply in our UPP funding, um, the last, and I don't know if we've heard yet, mass development. Uh, for, I believe it's a million dollars to, uh, kind of protect the buildings. Yeah, make safe the roofs and openings and things like that, so-
So the, who is the responsible, I'm trying to understand who's responsible for that. I keep hearing a lot of Trinity, but Medfield, we, we own the buildings. So what are we doing tomorrow?
We're not doing any, we're not doing anything, Jeff, we made it clear to town meeting that we would not spend any more money on this project, we anticipated Trinity would have closed last year. We did get additional funding last year to do some ground maintenance, but we are working with Trinity on moving that forward with the extension of the LDA.
And I don't think you're naive to the fact that we all know that weather happens, and that those, you're concerned about the buildings more than we are, in a sense, cuz you know you wanna be working on them, so, I have to believe, Dan, when you can, you're doing what you can to preserve them.
Yep.
Yep.
Danny, I had another question. Are you gonna keep the slate roofs, or are you gonna put on all-new roofs, do you think?
There will be all-new roofs put on, uh, there'll be a synthetic, uh, we've received approval for synthetic slate, which really is, um, you would never know, and it's act, you would never know it's not slate, but it's, um, more durable, and, um-
After 130 years, those slates are done, okay.
Well, I saw that, it's actually something I zoomed in on when you were giving your presentation, so I was curious, so, yeah, I read that it's synthetic. It's actually good for the roofs, cuz you can get in and repair the roofs, so it's huge.
Maybe we'll do some, maybe Jean can do like an art installation with the old slate.
Jean, you're gonna get first dibs, you know how many people are gonna be lined up trying to get those slates?
Or paint, yeah.
All right, so any more, any questions?
Oh, wait, actually, sorry, one thing, in case they are listening, um, one thing we wanted to let you know was that we have included space in Building 10 for the Scouts of America, um, community space.
Oh, good.
Or the Scouts of Medfield or Region, um, so we have that, um, included as part of that, so.
Thank you.
Is that the building that they were in before?
It is not, it's not, but it, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, oh, yeah, thank you for doing that.
All right, so next on the document here is to vote to sign the letter of support for Trinity's acquisition, proposed adaptive reuse of the Medfield State Hospital using state and federal historic tax codes.
Okay, one comment, but only if it matters, uh, on the letter. If the letter is good just the way it is, and this should be get approval, then disregard, the only, the only, as I was reading the second paragraph, the one thing I noticed we didn't talk about at all was anything about the state's housing goals. So I just, I would have, if, if it, if it's necessary, it probably isn't, would have added a sentence that said, this project also represents the most significant effort the town is making to support this state's high priority goal of producing more affordable housing on, in, on the site.
He won it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so send that to-
That reinforces our message.
That's the only point, uh, what I'm trying to do, Abby, is, I don't want the state to forget that the longer it takes for us to get the kind of funding from the state we need, the longer it takes for them to get the housing they want.
Yeah, I think we're gonna go up there and march in front of the state house.
All right, make a motion.
I, I move that we approve the letter, I guess, as, uh, the, with the suggested edit.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're good, great.
Thanks, Abby, thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, yeah. Thanks for coming, guys.
Uh, anyone following the agenda at home, I did announce at the beginning that, uh, item number three, Medfield Housing Authority, to provide an update, that will not happen tonight, they, uh, asked, they notified us before the meeting that they were not able to make it.
I didn't read the full notice in the elevator, I only got through the first paragraph, what is it? I, I, I got to the part where it said they were gonna get a lot of documents.
They've decided this was, being invited to the meeting was not the best forum in which to share all of the documents we have suggested we need to see. So they're going to send all those documents to me, and they will be hosting a meeting next Tuesday at the council, uh, council, at the Housing Authority, in the community room. It will be hybrid, and their attorneys will be present for anybody who has questions about the process to date of the project.
Can we put that on the town website tomorrow, just to give people a heads up, like a little bulletin, okay, that'd be great.
So then I have one other question, process, from a process standpoint, when they, had they come to, today, we would, would they have only been coming to give us information? This is fundamentally a state contract, in other words, what role, if any, do we formally play in this whole contract and whole agreement?
So not until they get further into, until they apply to the ZBA for their comprehensive permit? We had discussed at the last meeting, having them in to just talk to us about the process they had, that had occurred to date.
Right.
So, they didn't think it was appropriate at this time, uh, to meet with the board, and they've, you're all welcome to go attend their meeting next Tuesday to discuss-
So rather than talking to the select board about the issues, select board here, they're gonna have a public meeting next Tuesday for the public, and should we want to come in? I don't find that a very good response. And I did take time going through this, and I do have questions.
Well, we can ask them to come back, I mean, I, I think what's important with their next Tuesday is for the residents, right? Which is one, which is the only reason why I became passionate about, I just want to know the answers. I'm, I may be questioning what's going on to a certain extent, but at the end of the day, if somebody asks me a question, and one of the elected officials is town, I should have an answer, whether they like my response or not, it's not up to me.
I agree, and, and we did have a commitment from Candace and Brian McMillan to attend the meeting. I had discussed this with them over the holidays, and then they've been advised by their council that it was not appropriate for them to come to this meeting.
So what they do next Tuesday, doesn't mean we still can't ask them back.
I know, but would it be appropriate for them to come to that meeting? I mean, I, you know, the problem is, I like the project.
I know.
We need the housing.
Yeah.
But the evasiveness just brings all kinds of alarm bells for me, and, and I don't know why it's there. And maybe it's not, maybe it's just, um, jumping at shadows, but-
Yeah, of course. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a quick reschedule, just to save here. Are you sure?
Okay.
No, you know what, because, you know, I'd rather, because you've been sitting here, the other one, the other one you can go through, so I'm just gonna jump to, vote to sign contract with Trojan Technologies for a new UV system at the wastewater treatment plant for a total of $324,000.
So this is our wastewater treatment plant, this is, uh, the, the ultraviolet system that we have there now is, um, is obsolete, it's not supported anymore. We are fortunate enough to have this an approved ARPA project. And it's the last line of defense for our wastewater treatment plant, so whatever goes in the Charles River, this is the last process that it goes through, to get rid of, uh, whatever contaminants that we can. So it's an important piece of equipment, and, uh, just ask for your support on it.
Didn't we recently, within my, my two and a half years of being on the board, we did put some UV light on the system, was that the different-
It was just for the bulbs and replacement of some arms, that's all, just for replacement parts.
Before, and now this is a whole new system?
Whole new system.
Okay, okay, that's what I was reading through the contract, I was like, you know, I haven't been here that long, but I do remember going through that, the contract, and I, my product is a UV product, so I'm sensitive to when we talk about that technology. Okay.
You should've talked to her.
Everything it says, it does, technically, it's what UV light does, I'm not gonna deny that. Uh, Pete, any questions on that?
No questions.
And Mo and I have spent a fair amount of time in the last couple of days going through the, the contract. It's a, it's a Canadian company.
Right.
Uh, so there's things that they practice, Mark, I know you've had a chance to go through it, I, there, you saw the last few issues or questions I had. Basically, I said if Mark thinks it's okay, I'm good with it. Probably the most important thing for me, around any reservations that I had around the terms that were in, expressed in the contract, were pretty much taken care of, when I realized this is, we're buying a piece of equipment. That's it. Somebody else is gonna, we're gonna have to hire somebody to install it, but we're, we're literally so, uh, I told Mo, I, I come in, so my, my old complaints about the form of our contracts, even when we're buying trucks, kind of applies here, we're buying a piece of equipment, if they show up with a piece of equipment, I think, well, you said, this is the company that, the, this equipment is sort of the gold standard for the application. It, it came up costing less than what we had budgeted for what we thought it might cost. And so far, it seems like the company has been responsive in trying to deal with things, so I'm, I'm good with it.
So I had a lot of concerns and issues when I first reviewed it, I met with Mo several times, and he's been back and forth with the company, they originally dug in, uh, but ultimately, they almost did a 180 on the payment, so that, where they were getting paid almost all upfront, we, they actually, 75,000, 75% of the price doesn't get paid until after it's delivered.
Good.
Which is critical, and then the other concern I had was, one, it's offer, number two, there's a change of administrations, and this is a Canadian outfit, which may, may not be subject to tariffs.
Yeah.
So they agreed reluctantly, but they agreed to language to acknowledge that the source of funding here is the ARPA fund, and if something happens to that, we're not liable, we can walk away.
Okay, okay, that's good.
On the other hand, then we would still need to figure out a way to buy something that's probably about a $300,000 piece of equipment, without the ARPA funds through a second process, and-
It's obsolete now, so we would have to replace it within the next few years anyways.
Okay.
What's the date by which we have to finish spending the ARPA funds, isn't that December?
2026.
26, okay.
But the period of performance on this is actually December 31st, 2025.
Yeah, we tried to push it up to-
There's no reason to use it.
And I, you know, it's, I was, I was reading through the contracts, and then I was like, you know what? If I know Gus, he's gonna ping on the things that concern me, and I almost called you today, Mo, and then I was like, you know what? Wait till we get here tonight, I have a feeling it's gonna get flushed out.
How forward my emails, Steve?
I would've answered the phone.
So I'm good.
Okay, you ready?
No, I'd have answered the phone.
Well, your first call to me, it said Joey Rashudos, but I realize almost anybody in town that's calling, it shows up as Joey Rashudos' number on my, on my caller ID, it's not you guys, it's what's on my phone. Okay, I move that we sign the contract with Trojan Technologies for a new UV system at the wastewater treatment plant for $324,000, uh, to be delivered by December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, say you very much.
Thanks, Mo.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mo.
All right, jump back up, we've got some board and committee appointments, resignations. Accept the resignation of Claire Mann from the Board of Water and Sewerage. And then, do we do that separately, do we, we both?
As well, but I'm gonna do, we accept the resignation of Claire Mann from the Board of Water and Sewerage.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye, aye, sorry to see her go, we hate when we get those resignations, but I understand she, she requested it. Appoint Dave Pucci as a full member of the Board of Water and Sewerage, he's currently, just so people know, currently an associate member.
I move that we appoint David Pucci as a full member of the Board of Water and Sewerage.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, all right.
And I, I will post that we are now looking for a new associate member, so.
Excellent.
We'll take care of that.
All right, Mia, Maria Del Fuente, Land Use Director, requests a select board award, Wayfinding and Signage Master Plan for the downtown.
So this was, uh, I know Maria came to you earlier, uh, this year, oh, earlier, earlier last year, geez, to talk to you about the wayfinding grant, and we, uh, are looking for two firms, uh, she spoke to several firms. Uh, we had two that did respond to, um, our request, and we are asking for the Selbert Perkins Design Firm, uh, that's who we would like to award the contract to.
Okay.
So we're gonna, if you award tonight, um, the bid, we'll put a contract together, um, but we're anxious to get started on that, we have a deadline in which to spend the money, so.
So the wording on the agenda, sounds like it should say, so we're awarding the con-
Yeah, we were just picking between the two firms, we're just gonna let them know that we're picking the Selbert Perkins, and then we'll have a contract for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
So award, so it's, so the company, company name is Sel-
Uh, Selbert.
Selbert, S-E-L-B-E-R-T?
Yes, Selbert Perkins Design.
Perkins Design, so that's who we're awarding the contract to.
In full disclosure, when we put the agenda together, we had not been able to have our internal meeting to decide who was going to get the award, so we just did that the other day.
So, okay, I'm ready.
In reading both proposals, it was clear there was one that was, uh, definitely put more effort into providing us the proposal.
Very good.
And they're, are they're developing this master plan?
Yes.
Ready for?
I'm ready when you are.
All right, I move that we award Selbert Perkins Design the contract to develop a wayfinding and signage master plan for the downtown.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, uh, vote to sign the temporary lease with United Church of Christ for Temporary Parks and Recreation Space.
Just editorially, I had, I had to chuckle at the one clause that basically said Parks and Rec can't use that space for immoral purposes.
For what?
Like, for immoral purposes. I guess if you sign a church contract, you know, you can never be too careful.
Well, ironically, that is the town's, when the town is landlord.
Oh.
That is the town's lease.
Okay.
Somehow got a copy of it from someone.
It's our provision.
And put it right back on us, and it was put to me, oh, well, this is the town's lease, so it's the same thing we always use. And I said, well, no, it's not exactly reciprocal, and I did tweak some parts of it within limits, not as much as I would have otherwise.
Does that imply that the town does have facilities that people can lease if they have immoral purposes in mind?
No.
Well, all I can think of is Mike Sullivan used to talk about a particular house in town.
You are all aging me this evening.
All right, uh, you ready?
I'm ready when you are.
I'm, uh, oh, no, the next question is, the, it's the chair, it's the, uh, Parks and Rec Director of the Parks and Rec Commission, it's on the signature, what is it, so?
We're changing it, you are, it, we, I believe we are changing it, uh, the one you will sign tonight will be the select board signing, not the Parks and Recreation.
Oh, okay.
To the other?
Why are we signing it for them versus Parks and Rec elected?
Original draft, you might have the original draft and not the revised one.
No, no, just me.
This afternoon.
Mark, Mark has advised Parks and Recreation Commission, they do not have contract awarding authority, only with the select board. That answers that question.
Okay, so, so we're authorizing the chair of the select board?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other, uh, I had a couple of changes that I showed to Mark before the meeting, but I don't know if the, if the other one you, you noticed. They're signing, they're having their treasurer sign, I would always have the president and treasurer of a corporation sign to make it a corporate act, so you don't have to look for a certificate of vote to authorize it.
Like I said, this, given the context here, I, I just took that into account more so than I normally would.
Okay.
Just administrative offices that are critically needed, and there isn't a whole lot of space out there.
Yeah, and they're not gonna run programs out of there, apparently.
No.
No, well, they have the ability to do some programming there for an additional fee, so they may rent additional space to do some programming there.
Ready?
Yep.
I move that we authorize the chair of the select board to sign the temporary lease of the United Church of Christ for Parks and Recreation Space.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve the 10K race hosted by the Souls of Medfield on April 27th, 2025, pending public safety approval.
So Emily is here, if you'd like to speak to her from the Souls of Medfield, I know that they have been in contact with both the deputy chief and chief Garette, and they've been working just through their safety protocol. Chief Ann Berry had no issue with it being on the agenda, just subject to their final approval on safety protocol.
Okay. And I think from what, I think the gentleman that has been reaching out to me was Matt, I think they just wanna make sure that we're good with the state, and as to your point, if everything else gets ironed out, at least they check the box with us, okay?
They wanna start, uh, doing their advertising.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, I move that we approve the 10K race request hosted by the Souls of Medfield on April 27th, 2025, pending public safety approval.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, 2025 Annual Town Meeting, vote to close the 2025 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Yes. Yeah, I just have, actually, I meant to pass these at the beginning, I apologize.
See what the articles are?
Yes, let me send that off to you. Uh, but pass Jean, did you all, since you're in the audience? There's one, you can pens the rest out.
Through the restriction of the ground, we did.
Clearly, everybody's trying to kill me tonight. So there's a couple, I wanna go, so right now, we currently have 40 articles. We have, I have put in placeholders for some of these, you've, um, we presented, Yvonne and I presented some senior tax exemption amendments we'd like to make, uh, to-
we'd like to make to move to the cost of living. So I have held numbers for those. You haven't formally indicated to me that you would like to move forward with those exemptions. So we've at least held placeholders for them. We can always pull them off if you change your mind. We have a couple on here that Conservation has proposed to put on here. We have Park and Rec modular appropriation. We do have an authorization to dispose of real property at MSH. As Pete indicated earlier, that is in relation to a Parks and Recreation and a good commercial property. We have a lot of our usual annual fiscal articles. We also have a placeholder for the Opt-In Stretch Energy Code from the Energy Committee. The police chief would like to restart the discussion about the townwide 25 mile an hour speed limit. And the Conservation would also like to propose the water conservation private well restriction article come back before the town.
Might I highly recommend, if they have not spoken to private well owners, that that's not going to go over well? I mean, that's why I pulled it last time.
Right, so I just received this this week. So I figured you could be in touch with the Conservation Commission to talk to them about what happened last time and how we could best.
And it was said to those residents, we would not bring something like this forward unless we held information sessions and considered certain things. Okay.
I think what we said was that we would, you wanted to pull it and we pulled it so that there'd be a year so that that could happen.
And then with what we had, we decided it wasn't something we needed to push forward because it was kind of one of those one-off years.
We never decided that at the Select Board.
Well, let's go this way. No one else brought it up when I had talked to one of the gentlemen. I said, right now, it's not, it's not flying above radar because we're not in a 100-year drought scenario that we were a few summers ago. So if you want to bring it back, Pete, we can bring it up right now. It's just no one else has brought it up. And I wasn't, after talking to the gentleman, I was like, okay, I'm not going to.
Well, I don't know if we can talk about it tonight, but I always thought it was a wonderful idea. And out of deference to you, I agreed to postpone it for a year, but I don't think we should postpone it any further.
So I would just think, I just think Conservation should have a conversation with the Select Board about the experience we had last time because you made a promise that you would reach out to those. I think there's 87 of the private well owners and we would have a conversation about them. So I can pass that information along.
Yeah, and I'll let the, like, one of the things that was asked, which was to consider grandfathers, so those that have invested, and then anyone coming forward. Yeah, no problem. It's just communication and we didn't do it last time, so we'll make sure it happens this time.
The Planning Board has four zoning articles that they are proposing to move forward, which is the mixed-use overlay districts. They are looking at the open space neighborhood development, the floodplain district, accessory dwelling units, which we will be required to do. And I believe the state has just issued their first round of guidance and are looking for feedback. So Maria is working on that.
Okay.
And then Gus had brought forth an article.
It wasn't for removal of inclusionary zoning, it would be a revision.
I'm sorry, revision, yes.
Yeah, revision. I called Christine just to say, can you put a placeholder on? Because we haven't talked about this at all, but I think it's worth looking at. But right now is, I think you know, the inclusionary zoning requirements based on the size of a project. If the project is greater than, I think it's eight units, it starts to kick in. If it's 21 to 49 units, it's 20, it's 20% have to be affordable. And then if it's over 49, as the Trinity project is, it has to be 25% of the units have to be affordable. We are on a trajectory right now to be at least 17% affordable with just what's happening. And that's before perhaps some of the most recent proposed 40B projects are in place. And the issue, as I see it, is that even if you look at what the state's done with the MBTA Communities Act, is they basically de-emphasized 40B, capital A, affordable housing units and said, no, we need small A affordable housing units. I agree that that's what we need in this town, is houses that are affordable, not houses that are necessarily subsidized through a 40B-type project that basically disqualifies most people who have a house here in town from qualifying anyway because they've got equity in their house and they don't qualify for net worth, the net worth. So that raised the issue for me. If you think about it, every 40B project that's out there, the people who are living in the non-40B affordable units are subsidizing the people who are living in the 40B affordable units because the project, if you look at it as a whole, if 40B affordable units are below market, then the developer's making up the money for that by what's being charged for all of the market rate units that are in that project. If we're looking for small A affordable units, having projects be required to have large percentages of 40B, capital A, affordable units, when we're on a trajectory of something like 17%, doesn't make sense. You're basically punishing people who probably would benefit from having a small A affordable housing unit, whether it's rental or purchase, in order to overproduce the 40B level. And looking at the state with the MBTA Communities Act, they've actually abandoned that emphasis and they're going in this small A affordable direction. So my thought on it was to modify the inclusionary zoning that we put in at the time because our consultants were all telling us this is a really good thing to do, and basically soften the requirement. I don't want to get rid of the inclusionary zoning. I don't want, I don't want to just say, oh, whatever you put up only has to be 10% for argument's sake, just as a stake on the ground, saying instead of having 15, 20, 25% tiers, maybe all the tiers are 15%. You know, if you, you still get an awful lot of affordable housing units.
This is, what we have now only applies to multifamily housing, rental or condo. It doesn't apply to subdivisions, single-family homes. And the problem with trying to get affordable with a small A with single-family homes is that 4A, the zoning and neighboring statute, it actually has a provision in there that was originally intended to go work the other way. You're not allowed to address the interior area of a single-family residence. So it was actually so that you couldn't put in minimums to keep snobs out, you know, to keep lower homes from being built. It was a snob zoning thing. But it's flipped around because you can't cap it either. That's where the focus is now. I'm going to make a statement as a generality. If you have a buildable lot, a builder is going to put the largest house on that lot that he or she can get away with getting on that lot. And there's nothing you can do to stop it.
If they meet all the zoning bylaws, yeah.
Well, subdivision control of the lot doesn't allow you to, they can do it as of right. So the only possible way is to have these carrot approaches, well, bonus density type districts where, you know, you say, okay, if you build, if you build, you know, you've got your as-of-right development, if you want a denser development and you agree to do these types of units, we'll let you do.
Okay.
And we haven't had any of that. I don't remember the last time we had any kind of traditional subdivision, even in front of the planning. So I'll move west.
So Christine, will the planning, will the ZBA group come in and talk to us about why they're requesting these or?
The Planning Board usually doesn't. They're meeting on the 27th to have their initial discussion. Then they'll start having their public hearings for them.
Okay.
But they usually don't come in and present those ahead of time. I'm more than happy to have Maria come in and talk to you about it, but.
I'll go one-on-one just to.
Okay.
And Christine had suggested that I call the Chair of the Planning Board. So I'll give Sarah a call to know why I did what I did here. But that was the thought behind it, is it's like the state's going in a direction of small A affordable and we're structured with inclusionary zoning to set up economics that actually will add to the burden. And you may be, you know, you're right about single units, I get that, Mark. But I'm even thinking about rental units. You know, it's if you have like an aura, if you're at some higher percentage, well, somebody that's renting, if they're renting in a place like Aura or a park or somewhere like that, there's a good chance that they, it could be that they're only here temporarily, but there's a good chance people who can't afford a house. But the money that is not being collected on rent for the 40B affordables is being picked up by the rent that everybody that's not in an affordable is. And it's like, you know.
Just remember, the developer has capped on those projects on their profit return.
Sure, but, sure, but they're not going to, I mean, if you're, what you're saying is, well, Mark, really what's driving the rental rates right now is not some sort of a, you know, a premium on the non-affordable units because the market won't stand for anything above a certain rate. I get that. What I'm looking for is ways for this town to promote building small A affordable houses. Because if we don't do that, and if we continue down a path where we have 20, 25% 40B affordable, but nobody, there's nobody in the middle that can buy the small A affordable, then what we're doing is going down a path of an exclusive town where affluent people can afford it. And then we have these neighborhoods on the other side of the tracks that are where, you know, it's the modern day equivalent of the project. And I'm being a little harsh in my words.
Unfortunately, this town, there is none of that. Everywhere people are building beautiful homes. There's no area that's been.
Just a matter of degree. I mean, Franklin, which would be way more of a mixed demographic than Medfield, but the average price in Franklin isn't that much below where your average price is.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Just across the board from one community to another.
It's ideal what you're asking for, but in today's world, sadly, it's not realistic. I mean, anytime someone can get a piece of property and they can build what they can build, you're basically telling a builder, you're not getting the land at a reasonable price, right? Everyone's overpaying for property and then they've got to try to build. And then they're trying, they're not doing it for break even. So that's where you're.
Well, why does, but I don't understand why then therefore we want 25% 40Bs.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that's case, but when you're saying we want people to build smaller homes, you can't, you can't encourage a builder.
I'm inside a 40B project and I'm saying if, not the Trinity necessarily, this may not apply for Trinity, but let's take Trinity. 25% of 334 units that are going to be rent apartments are 40B. Would the economics that would make that apartment complex be different if 15% of the 334 were 40B and 33 more units were eligible for market rate rental? You know, I don't, I don't know that, you know, I didn't ask Trinity that because I don't think they're rethinking their whole business. But my point is, if you had that and if that was the circumstance where you didn't have 25% affordable, because we have no reason to need 25% affordable where we're going, we're going to overachieve.
Right, right, right.
And somebody in that, in that complex is, through the rents, the rents that are being charged, is picking up the subsidized rentals of those 40B. And I'm saying, let's smooth that out a little bit, there's no driver.
So it's a matter of timing. When that, when that zoning was being considered by the Planning Board and the town was below the 10%, 25% gets you credit for the whole project.
Right.
If you're less than 25%, you only get credit for the number you have. If you're talking maintenance, something above 10 and around 15 works just fine for.
Right. That's, yeah, that's the point I'm making. And I'm not trying to blow it up. I'm just saying, why are we, why are we striving so hard to go and overachieve at a time when the state's coming up with other schemes that also.
We don't know what's coming out of this.
Yeah, so why, why do you want to overachieve on this?
Okay.
I just want for the, particularly for your benefit in that of the people on the floodplain, that's an update. It used to be just updating the maps when the USGS would come out with new maps. They went, they've gotten more aggressive in terms of not just floodplanes for mapping purposes, but really getting proactive in terms of discouraging building in places it shouldn't be built.
Smart.
And they've gone way beyond just the mapping, so far so that, I think it's been four years. It was pre-COVID, the last time they tried to do it, they shipped us a model of what they expected. Unfortunately, it was a one-size-fits-all thing. They've got DCR at the state level enforcing it for them and it went way beyond zoning. There was a whole lot of pushback and they went back to the drawing board. So this is the latest iteration. And of course, with the change of administration in Washington, to be perfectly honest, I don't know how aggressive they're actually going to be beyond the traditional just, this is the updated map.
Okay.
We'll have to wait and see.
Okay. All right.
Interestingly, we didn't receive any citizen positions this year.
That's it?
So we got to vote.
Vote to close.
I move that we close the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, no consent agenda items. Gifts, vote to accept a gift of 519 from the Wheelock Parent Teacher Organization to Medfield Outreach.
And I would suggest an authorized outreach to expend the same.
Okay. And authorize.
That's actually what the statute requires.
And authorize, okay, you got that.
What would be a situation where somebody accepts money that they can't spend?
The gift statute, I was just through this in Franklin, doesn't require acceptance legally. It requires you to authorize the department to be able to expend it once they've accepted.
So should we get rid of the accept a gift part and just say authorize them to spend? I'll do it the way it's written.
Okay. We'll change it.
All right, I meant that we accept a gift of $519 from the Wheelock Parent Teacher Organization to Medfield Outreach and authorize Medfield Outreach to expend same.
Second?
All right, all those in favor? All right, no meeting minutes. But I will note, Frank, do you mind adding, because we didn't approve the May 28th ones? So we still need to approve that.
Oh, yep, I apologize. You sent a set of minutes up, I think it was before Christmas. I know it's in my head that I never got to it, but.
It's, yes, you're right, there is a June set out there. I did not add those, you're right.
Well, I didn't add it. I said, oh, that's something I don't have to do this afternoon, but. I haven't forgotten that it's there. I also haven't forgotten that Ben sent me a contract that also wasn't on the agenda. So he sent me that one before. I will look at, I haven't forgotten. It wasn't on the agenda, so I said, okay, I got two more weeks. This is good.
Okay. Town Administrator update.
Just a very brief, it was an incredibly nice holiday break. But recognizing that, I want to thank all of our public safety officials who did work the actual holidays, keeping all of our Medfield residents safe. We appreciate their effort on that. We'll have a full update in January, but really the most important update is Brittany is back in the office. So, we're good.
I missed her today.
I know. And that's it, we'll have a full update next, our next meeting.
Okay. All right, so, excuse me, next meeting dates, we got one here left in January, January 21st, February 4th, February 18th, March 4th, March 18th. Annual Town Elections will be March 31st. And we roll into April with April 1st, April 15th. So April Fool's Day and Tax Day? Ooh, there we go.
Yep, well, that's usually the warrant hearing, so. Just to note, we are adding a meeting on February 25th.
Oh, good.
That we, I just, I just got heard back from Gus this afternoon, so we're good for the February.
That's a one item.
That should be a one item agenda.
Okay.
Have a discussion.
And then a placeholder for the week before the Annual Town Meeting, which would be April 29th. And then the Annual Town Meeting is May 5th. All right, Select Board Member Reports, make it a way beat.
I went to the Medfield Police Department's party for Sergeant Dan Burgess, who retired. It was a wonderful event. Dan spoke eloquently, his wife spoke eloquently. We'll miss him. I met with Steve Callahan, the Chair of the, co-chair of the Warrant Committee about the financial policies draft, gave my input on that and he gave me some explanations as well. I had office hours and helped somebody out with an alcohol permit. Brittany did, actually, because she knows how to do that stuff. And she's back. But a very interesting discussion with people, it's about green burials and Sunday burials. And so that that'll progress. And then I'll just let people know that are interested, there's a proposed 40B at 98 Pine Street, 12 units on less than five acres, I think it is. And there's going to be a, the developer is doing a meeting at 6 o'clock on Thursday this week at the Public Safety Building, January 9th, if anybody's interested in that project. That's it.
I think I brought up the tail end on our discussions with the developer about potential development at South Hospital Road. So it was a very good discussion. I was intrigued, I was, did I already explain this? I don't think I did, because this was, this is after I had kind of thought that this was going to be some sort of a trade-off between getting something that would be of value to the town in terms of a physical asset or getting money for the property. And I was extremely surprised, pleasantly surprised to realize that we actually might be able to get both of those things. So I think, I think the plan is to have him come in later on this month. I think it's going to be a conversation well worth having, particularly in light of some of the recent developments around the Parks and Rec area. So I liked the discussion. I was intrigued, and I think we definitely should have that conversation.
I think that's the February 25th meeting.
Yep.
And then also, I thought Danny Burgess, Sergeant Burgess's retirement ceremony was very well done. It was nice, it's, it's nice to see a full police department. And a lot of, a lot of fresh and enthusiastic faces, but also some of the comments were made about what those younger police had learned from Sergeant Burgess, which I think was important as well. And that's, I think, all I got.
I was at that same retirement gathering, so it was a nice turnout. I will say, it was nice, at the end, the chief brought us up, we had a chance to learn about how our drones, drones being used and training that the officers have gone through, and just how beneficial it's come in, and other towns are tapping in and asking us to assist. So I thought that was really informative. My, my other one here. Oh, there's a Parks and Rec meeting tomorrow night that I think everyone should be well advised to sit in and listen. And that's being held here tomorrow night, right?
Yes.
6:00 or 7:00 o'clock?
6:00.
6:00 PM?
Trying to think, because I have three meetings, and I'm, I'm triple booked, but I'm going to be here at 6:00.
Probably be in my car, but I'm going to try to take that one while I was doing, just to listen in. But I think there's a lot of very important discussions to be raised at that, and I think people should be listening in. So that's, that's good. And then I'll do a little shout out for Marion, because I know she is rallying citizens to step up and pull nomination papers. I have pulled mine, got all my signatures, got a few extra just in case anyone was not a registered voter. But I know she, like, Medfield Housing Authority, I know Parks and Rec, I believe, has three openings, there's quite a few openings. So if anyone's looking to explore that, and then I believe this Saturday, there's also a, a meeting for volunteers, right? At the UCC Saturday, 11 to 1. It's kind of like a volunteers' fair for people who may be new to town, kind of curious as to what options are there. Highly recommend, you know, this town runs by its citizens. Like, there's, it's not run by just those that are on the payroll. Like, so much of this town is volunteer. So I was thrilled when I saw that email come across, and hopefully there's a good attention and attendance, I should say. And if anything, just go learn more about all the different groups. So on that note, Happy New Year all. Glad we're all back together. Glad Brittany's back in. And to your point, you said, you know, thanks to all the fire and police that took the time over the various holidays, because it's definitely a jointless jumping. So all good. All right. On that note, motion to adjourn?
All right. Move we adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night all. Thank you, Gene. You hung in there. A souls survivor.
Covering for Bill.